My name is Rolando Bonia and I am the Chair of the San Jose Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held via Zoom conference call due to the COVID-19 crisis. Members of the public may participate by following the instructions listed on the agenda. You may also view and listen to the meeting on live stream cable TV, Granicus and YouTube. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide the comment during today's session. I'll now take roll call. Bonia here, Casey is out. Caballero? Caballero? Cantrell?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Lardinoa? Lardinoa? Montañez? Montañez? Oliverio? Oliverio?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ladaino is present.
Okay.
Part of me Chair, I'm here.
Ah, perfect, okay. Oliverio is here, Lardinoa is here. Ornelas Wise?
Here.
Torrance?
Here.
Young?
Here.
All right, with that, we'll now move on to the summary of hearing procedures. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and appellants may make a five-minute presentation. City staff will call out names of the public who identified the items they want to speak on. You may identify yourself by the raised hand feature on Zoom. Click star nine on your phone or you may call 408-535-3505. Or email planning support staff at San Jose CA dot G O V and identify your name, phone number, and what items you'd like to speak on. As your name is called, city staff will unmute you to speak after we confirm your audio is working, your allotted time will begin. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to the commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. Staff will unmute the speaker to respond to the commissioner. The public hearing will then be closed and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Planning commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section twenty point one two oh point four hundred of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protests to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section twenty point one hundred point two two oh of the municipal code. You know, I'm not losing my mind here. I hope I didn't interfere. My kids are, I think, doing karaoke, so I'm going to tell them to put that down. Um, so apologize for that. All right, call to order in orders of the day. We'll now move to public comment on planning commission items on non-agendized items. Jen, uh, do we? And while you're doing that, let me call downstairs.
Hi Chair, yes, we have two hands raised. Um, Jean, oh, we have one hand raised. Jean Adams, is this for an item that's not listed on the agenda? You can go ahead and unmute your device. Jean Adams?
Hello?
Hi, is your comment for an item that's not listed on the agenda tonight?
I don't have a comment yet. My hand is lowered according to my iPad.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Chair, this concludes all of the hands raised.
All right, perfect, and I hope I didn't give you guys any technical.
Never mind. We keep getting our hand raised and lowered, sorry, so we have Rosio.
All right, let's just, okay.
Yeah, uh, Rosio, is it, uh, is your comment for an item not listed on the agenda today?
Hi, no, uh, my comment is for, uh, section five A.
Okay, we'll, we'll give you, uh, call your name when we get to that item.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well now, close public comment and move to deferrals and removals from calendars, seeing that there are no items. I just want to ask staff one more time, is that still accurate?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well now move to item four, consent calendar. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar, Jen?
I am not, I am seeing Jean Adams. Uh, Jean, did you want to speak on an item on consent calendar? Jean?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, uh, yes, I, my hand is lowered. Somehow it popped up to look like I had a question. I don't yet, thank you.
Uh, Chair, motion to approve the consent calendar?
Perfect, motion approved. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Oliverio with the motion, Lardinoa with the second. With that, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. Bonia, yes. Caballero? Caballero? All right, Cantrell? Garcia?
Yes.
Lardinoa?
Yes.
Montañez is out. Oliverio?
Yes.
Ornelas Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, with that, the consent calendar is approved. We'll now move on to item five, public hearing. I know we've got a couple of major items on the agenda tonight, so can we get a sense of how much public comment we're going to have? I want to give everyone, obviously, the time to speak, but I also want to give the commission the space to deliberate. Uh, Jen, can you, can we find out how much, uh, public comment we have for this item?
The hands are raising at, uh, per minute, but so far we have about ten hand raised. And it keeps from here, yeah.
Did you say it keeps going up?
Yeah, it keeps going up, we're at fifteen now.
All right, we're going to do public comment of one minute. Uh, with that, let's go ahead and begin public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, Gina White.
Wouldn't we normally have a presentation before public comment?
That is true. But you know what? Yeah, that's. Commissioner Lardinoa, had a long night. Appreciate you, appreciate you saying that. So we will do public comment for one minute and then let's go ahead and start with the staff presentation.
Uh, yes, clarified Chair, this is for, um, item five A.
That is correct.
Okay. Good evening Commissioners and Chair, this is Patrick Kelly. Let me share my screen just a moment, sorry about that. There we go. Okay. Evening Chair and Commissioners, this is Patrick Kelly, Planning Project Manager for this request. I'll try to keep my comments succinct, uh, given the other item on the agenda tonight is also of significant interest. The house proposed, um, by the applicant Mark Gishwind is located on an approximately sixteen and a half acre hillside property and would take access through Santa Teresa Road via driveway that coincides with a significant portion of an existing dirt road on the property. Uh, I hope you can see this, uh, image of the plan. The house would be situated within a swale of the property. Uh, in this location, about thirteen hundred feet from Santa Teresa Road and about seven hundred feet from the nearest single-family residence on Manresa Court to the north. This next slide shows the floor plan of the house. Going back really quick, the house is colored yellow and the deck for the house is colored green. So the green deck is shown here, uh, shaded in color and the house floor plan is, is, um, shown in yellow. Uh, the next slide shows the project elevations, uh, which are, um, basically show the houses being lapsided in a brown earth tone color. And, uh, slide four shows the, uh, location of the site. Um, kind of in an aerial view to give you some context. Um, and recent court, Bayless Drive, other, uh, neighborhood streets in, shown in the north here. The original plan proposed the house to be located, uh, in this blue area. Uh, blue dashed line, uh, where it would have been on a knoll, um, kind of visible against the, uh, ridgeline skyline from the neighborhood and also more visible from Santa Teresa Boulevard, which would have been inconsistent with general plan goals to minimize, um, projects in hillside areas. And that was the reason for staff's initial advice to the applicant, uh, that we would be recommending denial of the project. Um, since that time, the applicant has relocated the house off the knoll into the swale here where it will not be visible against any ridgeline and not be any prominent location, um, kind of visible from the neighborhood, despite it being still, uh, quite a distance from the neighborhood. Um, the next several slides show visual simulations of the house, uh, taken from various points of view. Uh, this is taken from Santa Teresa Road, um, showing the, uh, driveway and the original location of the house, uh, isn't visible, uh, in this image because it's behind the ridge, uh, in the knoll area where, or the swell where it won't be seen. Uh, this is from Manresa Court, uh, the original location of the house, uh, shown here and the new location seen, uh, in this image. Also from Manresa Court and different point of view. Um, and from, uh, another, the final cul- the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac bulb, uh, from Manresa Court. And you can see the, the house here in its new location, not, no longer on the, on the ridgeline. And for point of comparison, this is the original location, the original, uh, simulations we received for the project, kind of showing what it would look like. But, uh, that's been moved off that location into the swale over here. These are points of view from other neighborhood streets. This is the view from Penny, uh, from Finney Lane, uh, not, the house won't be visible from here, but here's the former location. Uh, from Aaron Place, won't be visible. And so, uh, as detailed in the staff report, the project is consistent with the open hillside general plan designation and hillside development policies, uh, in that site grading is minimized. The project is visually unobtrusive. Uh, the project avoids significant natural resource and wildlife areas, as will be further discussed in the, uh, SEQA, uh, presentation for the project. And to clarify, and, um, kind of detail, detail a few points that have been raised during the project review. Uh, while the project is outside the urban growth boundary, the general plan defines residential urban land uses as having a density of one dwelling unit per acre or greater. And this project is one unit per seventeen acres or point zero six dwelling units per acre, which is well below the urban density. Uh, hillside views are preserved through only allowing very low density development in hillside areas. And as the project is consistent with the general plan zoning ordinance, staff is recommending approval of the project. And I'll now turn the presentation over to the SEQA Project Manager Cassandra Vanderzweep, who will provide a brief overview of the environmental analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Cassandra Vanderzweep and I'm the Environmental Project Manager for the Geshwin Residence Project with the City of San Jose Planning Building and Code Enforcement. I apologize, I have a bit lengthy of a discussion, but I'll do my best to go through it, uh, efficiently. But slow enough that it's understandable. Um, so after the project application was submitted in twenty seventeen, the city decided that a full initial study rather than a categorical exemption would be required for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, also called SEQA, due to the characteristics of the property with proximity to the wildlife corridor. The initial study mitigated, mitigated negative declaration and supporting biological report were completed in the summer of twenty twenty-one and publicly circulated from July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one through August fifth, twenty twenty-one. The initial study concluded that the proposed project would not result in any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts with the implementation of identified mitigation measures. The initial study identified impacts related to biological resources, specifically that the project may result in impacts to the American badger and special status birds. And that impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level with the implementation of the identified measures. These mitigation measures require pre-construction surveys and avoidance measures for American badgers as well as nesting birds. The project applicant will also be required to implement these mitigation measures prior to and during the construction of the project pursuant to the project's mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Additionally, the permit contains standard permit conditions, including the compliance with all applicable conditions and payment of required fees identified in the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Conservation Plan, also called Habitat Plan. The Habitat Plan addresses potential impacts to habitats through fees paid to the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency. The city received four comments during public circulation. And after the end of public circulation, the city received additional comments from Pathways for Wildlife and lawyers representing the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Comments received during and after public circulation were primarily concerned with aesthetics impacts from the development on an open hillside, impacts to wildlife corridor along the Coyote Alameda's Canal on the northern border of the site, which included, nor, uh, which included long-term noise and lighting impacts from the project's operation and driveway use, removal of sensitive plant species such as milkweed, impacts to species including American badgers and mountain lions. Adequacy of the initial study and supporting biological report and a request that the, an E I R be repaired. And recently, um, a letter came in regarding AB fifty-two consultation and tribal cultural sensitivity. The response to comments and errata to the ISM and D were posted on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two and interested parties were notified. The response to comments, um, document addressed for the four comment letters received during public circulation period and the additional comment by Pathways for Wildlife submitted on October seventh, twenty twenty-one. As addressed in the response to comments, the comments received did not result in any new information that would change the ISM and D analysis or require a recirculation pursuant to SEQA statute and guideline section fifteen zero seven three point five. Staff would also like to address public comments that were received during the preparation for today's hearing. City planning staff and the project biologists have carefully reviewed all of the information and comments raised in the comments provided by the Audubon Society, the Muakma Aloney Tribe and overall project comments received. Regarding the project's analysis related to biological impacts, the city maintains that the project's biologists performed an adequate biological assessment for the purposes of SEQA. The ISM and D correctly identified impacts to biological resources, including the wildlife corridor and identified suitable mitigation measures and standard permit conditions to reduce any impacts to less than significant. The ISM and D identified the Coyote Alameda's Canal located within an easement on the project site is a wildlife corridor that allows various animals to cross under the Santa Teresa Boulevard. And that the proposed project would not block the canal, would not result in permanent barriers to wildlife movement and the development would be located a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from the canal, which is further from the canal than the existing suburban development to the north. The total disturbance on the site would be a point zero eight one acre portion of the sixteen point eight seven acre site, leaving the vast majority of the site undisturbed. The ISM and D recognizes the sensitive ecosystems in the project area and is requiring the project to follow conditions identified in the Habitat Plan. For appropriate covered species and finds that the compliance with the Habitat Plan is an adequate, adequate mitigation under SEQA and furthermore is consistent with the city's practice and approach to other projects citywide. In response to concerns about tribal consultation and sensitivity, staff notes AB fifty-two requires that a tribe request in writing to be notified by lead agencies through a formal notification. Apologies, I lost my spot. Through formal notification of proposed projects on the geographic area in which the tribe is traditionally and culturally affiliated with. As noted in the ISM and D, during the preparation of the ISM and D, the only tribe who had requested AB fifty-two notification in the City of San Jose was the Aloney Tribe represented by Andrew Galvin. And he was notified of the project on November eighteenth, twenty twenty and did not request consultation. During the public circulation of the draft ISM and D, the city notified all tribal contacts, um, provided by the N A H C via email, including the commenting Muakma Tribe of the circulating ISM and D. Staff did not receive comments from any tribes. After the public circulation of the draft ISM and D, in a good faith effort, the city did meet with the Tamiya Nation on, on September ninth and October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, because the tribe had requested AB fifty-two notification in twenty twenty-one. Staff coordinated with Tamiya Nation and shared the ISM and D's identified standard permit conditions for inadvertent discovery that would be applied to the project as well as the archaeological analysis. Tamiya Nation concluded consultation noting that the application of the standard permit conditions as well as conditions on, uh, as well as conditions for, for cultural resources training and an onsite monitor during earthwork activities would, um, would reduce cultural resources impacts to less than significant. Staff asserts that the city consulted in accordance with AB fifty-two and provided notification above and beyond AB fifty-two requirements. Additionally, the ISM and D included standard permit conditions to reduce any project impacts to tribal, to tribal cultural resources. Regarding the request for the preparation of an E I R, staff notes that the existence of public controversy over environmental effects of a project do not in and of itself require the preparation of an E I R. If there is no substantial evidence before the city that the project would have a significant effect on the environment. Substantial evidence consists of fact, reasonable assumptions predicated on facts and expert opinion supported by facts. The staff has, the city has determined that the comments presented during the ISM and D circulation period and leading up to the hearing do not present a fair argument that a significant effect would occur that has not already been identified and mitigated in this ISM and D and associated M M R P. The ISM and D provides an adequate level of information to allow decision makers to consider the potential physical changes to the environment associated with the project to make a determination on the proposal. In conclusion, the comment letters received do not raise any new issues, uh, about the project's environmental impacts nor do they provide any new information that would constitute substantial evidence to indicate that the project would result in a new significant environmental impact um, or impact substantially greater than those disclosed in the ISM and D. Staff reiterates that the biological resources assessment and the Geshwin Residence ISM and D are adequate and that the mitigation measures included in the M and D and M M R P are appropriate. Therefore, staff recommends the adoption of the Geshwin Residence Project mitigated negative declaration and associated M M R P. The project's biologist and environmental consultant are present and able to respond to any technical questions and city staff is also available to answer questions. This, um, concludes my presentation, thank you.
All right, Cassandra, you take a deep breath now, you know? Great job. All right, with that, do we now have the, uh, applicant presentation?
You do, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Let me share my screen. My name is Marcus Schwinn, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity and thank you so much to the city staff at San Jose who have done a very long, hard journey with me in regards to helping me better understand how we can best meet all the criteria and really, uh, working through that, I really appreciate that. And thank you for listening to me today for my request to be able to get my, uh, conditional use permit. I'm going to walk through a little bit of, of who we are, a lot zoning details, just to kind of give some context. Our green home design as well as our community approach and our compromises that we've done over the period of time. First off, it's, this is my wife and I and our six-year-old daughter and our dog. Uh, I was born and raised in San Jose, in fact, I grew up in the neighborhood. I learned to golf at Santa Teresa Golf Course there. I went to Martin Murphy Junior High where I took county champ and have my banner hanging in there with my name. I went to Los Paseos. Um, I grew up in the neighborhood there in the Paseo area and it's been a dream to come back and own a piece of land and desire to build a home where I can raise my family and put down roots as well. Um, also just like to communicate, you know, I'm not a developer, I'm not trying to sell this place, um, this is a personal project for me. Uh, a little bit just about the particular lot, uh, for some details here. There's technically, uh, two governing jurisdictions, jurisdictions, there's the county portion, which is the zero zero five, which is where the driveway is located. And then we're building right here in the area for the city. And so one thing I want to call out here is that it is just one legal lot with two different governing zonings. And actually in that zero zero five, uh, there's the right to build, uh, a home by right. Um, in addition, the lot in front of it, zero one four, which is owned by California Water District, is also a residentially zone lot. And the lot above us, which is another hillside lot, zero zero six is residentially zoned with agriculture as well. And then the zero zero one as well. So, uh, we're currently building in an area that has the residential zoning for it. And so we're not trying to do anything that is, you know, savory with the particular zoning here that we're speaking about. As I mentioned, this would be the particular area that meets the setback requirements to build in the county, but that's not the area necessarily that we thought would be best for a home and for the environment there. Um, if you wanted to zoom in a little bit more, this is kind of the, uh, plans, uh, that you can see. Um, for some of those people who really are concerned about the canal and perhaps wildlife corridor, uh, the area that we're proposing to build is the furthest from the canal on the property as well as from the other neighboring homes. So, you know, this is going to be a far better area than the place where I have right to build in the county area. So a vote for this project is really to kind of provide a bigger buffer to the canal than what I have by right. In addition here, the particular area has existing footprints of humans and some development. Um, first off, there's a road on the bottom area of the canal that runs the canal that is driven. Um, there's also a, uh, for maintenance, there's also a, uh, road on the top, these are dirt roads, by the way, on the top of the particular property and then there's one that goes through the property as well that we're using partially for our, our driveway. There is a well with a concrete pad and then there are some PG&E power poles in the outskirts of the area. Um, so this is an area as well as it has a concrete canal, uh, that people walk often. And so there's a presence here, there's, uh, maintenance done on the, on the actual canal, kicking down weeds. Um, you know, this isn't an area that hasn't been touched by man, is what I'm trying to communicate. Uh, there's also, we are the last residential lots until you get into the thousands of acres of open space that has already been preserved. Um, so, you know, this is an area that I think, uh, would be appropriate for building. Uh, our home design, we've also been able to build it in a way that is, you know, consistent with our values as well. Uh, we're planning on using recycled concrete for the home as well as some benefits that's going to provide, it's going to save trees and lumber, it's going to minimize landfill of concrete. It's also going to provide, uh, home energy and efficiency and neutral nature, uh, as the walls are thicker than normal and takes less to heat and cool. Um, we also, you know, provide a fire safety that's great for California. Uh, we're doing a hundred percent solar generated for our home, uh, for all the solar generated in the property as well as we develop, you know, a low-energy water well that will provide us water and septic systems that provides continual water replenishment or replenishment. And then the last thing is we're adding, uh, trees to the property, which we're happy to be able to do and that's part of our plans. Um, a couple of things just on the process that we've gone through, we've gone through this process for quite some time. Um, we actually voluntarily, without any request, knowing that there might be some opposition against this. My wife and I went knocking on every one of these doors to introduce ourselves, communicate, we're going to be your neighbors, happy to meet you. I grew up in the area. Um, many people support our project, many also did not. Uh, there are some people who believe definitely that you should not build anytime, anyplace outside of the city limits anymore. And we just have disagreement with that, uh, by using land appropriately, we think that that's okay, as long as it meets the city zoning criteria. Um, a couple of things that we had to address when we did a community meeting, the environmental groups to come, the neighbors came, they were able to share, uh, all their concerns and, and some misinformation came up as well that we had to, or incorrect information might be the better way to be able to address that. Um, some of the things that was communicated was that the lot was owned by the city and county and somehow we took it from them, just not true. Uh, there's communicated that no endangered, uh, that basically there was endangered, uh, or threatened plant, animals were detected within the project site, which is not the case. Uh, you know, we're not some rich developers that were trying to put up multiple duplexes in homes, it's not the case. Um, you know, once again, they're trying to think we're just changing the zoning, once again, not the case. You know, and that the lot did not have some residential use in its zoning and it does. Um, and there's some other things which aren't worth mentioning, more personal attacks. In addition, there, there was some big changes we made, uh, Patrick hit on some of those, we directly moved the entire location of the house. Um, we would have made it less visible, uh, we, 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 uh, better fit into the topography of the site itself. Just moved the home further from the community, further from the canal. And to be honest, it added years to the project, it added cost to the project, these compromises and working with them. Um, particularly adding the slowdown of COVID for everything, uh, you know, brought down, uh, a, a, a great cost to be able to adhere to all these criteria, but we're happy we're able to do so. Um, in addition to that, we went ahead and, uh, we've had some, uh, orchard that we put there with some trees to provide some screening for. Um, in addition to that, we went ahead and uh, we've had some uh, orchard that we put there with some trees to provide some screening for some neighbors who still might think uh, that the visual nature might be difficult. So we went ahead and made that uh, concession as well recently. And we've always been welcome to feedback for the entire time. Uh, Sierra Club I had some concerns and so I actually called them after they came to the meeting and I spoke with them, asking how they can support my project. Um, they couldn't think of anything necessarily. But you know, there were conversations that I've continually been able to have and work with folks who are interested in providing some constructive feedback. And that's been a little bit of the journey that we've been doing. Um, something I just kind of communicate here is that, you know, this has been a five-year-long process.
Hi Mark, sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, thank you for that. All right, with that, we will now do public comment and again, one minute public comment.
We'll start off with Gina White. Gina, go ahead and mute your device.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I would like to thank you for um, hearing my comments on this. And um, I would like to say that I'm completely against the approval of the development of this home and driveway. It seems to me like um, inevitably its development, including the construction noise and the light and sounds, once it's developed, will impact this wildlife corridor. Um, it will further pinch this narrow corridor. So I would request that an environmental impact report be done to fully study and mitigate the significant threats that the building this home and driveway will cause in this critically sensitive wildlife corridor. Um, the reason for this is these wildlife corridors are so important because the wildlife needs to be able to avoid crossing where roads where they'll be killed and potentially cause accidents. They need to not be afraid to use these corridors so they can track.
Sorry Gina, your time is up. Next we have Annie Yang.
Good evening Chair Bonilla and Commissioners. My name is Annie Yang. I'm the Chair of the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society's Environmental Action Committee and I speak for this organization. SCVAS has engaged in the process that led to the hearing tonight since the public first heard about the project and the neighbors alerted us to it. We ask you tonight to deny the project and require a full EIR to study, analyze and mitigate the significant and potentially unmitigable impacts that this home at this location and the associated driveway retention walls, well, and other elements as well as future presence will impose on our environmental resources. We and other organizations relied on substantial evidence, including expert opinion from Pathways for Wildlife and the voluminous scientific evidence provided in the Valley Habitat Plan to show that impacts to biological resources will be significant, potentially unmitigable and requiring EIR to study, disclose and mitigate. We received other communications that in all provide fair argument based on the substantial evidence that an EIR must be prepared before this project may be approved. These communications showed a flawed secret review due to a host of reasons. Please require an EIR. Thank you.
Next we have Dave Pochel.
Good evening, Dave Pochel, resident of San Jose. The NMD did not adequately inform you about the significance of the wildlife linkage in the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Plan and implies that the only possible disturbance to wildlife linkages is fencing. This simply is false as discussed in the Pathways for Wildlife Expert Opinion provided and supported by a large body of science. Would it take a fence to keep you out of a dark alley in a sketchy neighborhood? The NMD uh, does not adequately inform you about the potential health impact on mountain lion populations that depend on genetic flow through the linkage between the Santa Cruz Mountains and Diablo Range. Mountain lions aren't even mentioned in the NMD. Okay, both the Muakma Aloney and I believe in EIR and tribal constant consultation are required to proceed with this project. Thank you.
Next we have Brian Schmidt.
Uh, good evening, Brian Schmidt for Green foothills, speaking in opposition to this project. And while I do not represent or speak for the Muakma Aloney Tribe, I have had some discussions with them about this project. There are two problems with it and you received extensive comments, problems with process. It is their contention that they have not been consulted. I, what staff just said right now about being, there being a comment list um, is news to me. I think the simplest way to fix that is to delay any action now and go consult with Muakma Aloney Tribe. And secondly, that there is a substantive problem with the cultural impact of this project, that very long road along the canal and the house are impacting on a cultural landscape. So you should take a, a good look, go back and consider whether you should revise EIR, at least take no decision tonight or to reject the project and require an EIR if you're hard to move forward. Thank you.
Next we have Brian Gurney.
Sorry, I didn't get, um, yeah, hi, thank you. Um, I am a resident of Tulare Hill, um, across the street, um, um, across Santa Teresa from the proposed project. And um, I am opposed to the project. Um, it, I left with mostly questions listening at to this uh, presentation. Um, do, do, does wildlife only travel in canals? Because that canal didn't used to be there and wildlife was still traveling across there. So I think any uh, any development uh, along the ridgeline there is going to affect wildlife, uh, mid, uh, wildlife, the wildlife corridor. And um, you know, uh, planting trees and all the things that people do on their properties is going to be changing that ecosystem. Uh, I believe if it's the same as Tulare Hill, which I believe it is, it's a serpentine ecosystem which is special and required by the Bay Checker Spot Butterfly, which I believe is endangered or is in danger. Uh, it's not official yet. So I, I oppose the project request in EIR. Thank you.
Next we have Greg Fife.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yes, my name is Greg Fife. I'm a resident of District Two, longtime San Jose resident. And uh, I support uh, the question resident project. Um, I would request that this is approved and move forward. Seems like significant uh, work and time has been invested in making sure that it aligns with uh, the city ordinances as well as a very significant um, environmental impact uh, has already um, been presented and I think it was really thorough. Um, so I, I would request that uh, the council moves forward with its decision uh, to approve the project.
Next we have Mitchell.
Hi, this is Carolyn Mitchell and I am a longtime friend of the Gashwin family. Uh, I've lived here in San, South San Jose, actually on Calero for over twenty years. And I'm uh, very much uh, in favor of them being approved for this building permit. I, I'm very impressed, not just with their patience, but their willingness, uh, just the show of integrity to work with the city, to work with um, the environmental groups, to speak to the neighbors. And that's just the type of people they are. They are very conscientious and willing to make compromises and are very reasonable in the way they approach life. So I would request that this residential project for the Gashwins be approved. Uh, I'm just so excited for them. They'll make excellent neighbors for this entire valley. Thanks.
Next we have Jean Adams. Jean Adams.
I'm basically listening to the comments and appreciating everything I'm hearing. And I'm watching this, how the city votes on this.
Thank you. Next we have Jill Borders.
Thank you, Jill Borders. I want to ask you all a question. How did San Jose become the sprawling, fiscally challenged bedroom community that it is? And I will tell you, it happened one decision at a time. I'm not going to spend my time going over all of the wildlife impacts. All of that is well documented and researched. We should do a full EIR, but what I am going to mention is that we have a city document that is telling us to move away from this type of development. We, the voters, have voted for major Q, for major T, for urban growth boundary, for urban villages, to stop the sprawl. It has to mean something. We have to care enough to vote against these projects, even though I'm sure Mr. Gashwin is a wonderful person. Has nothing to do with it. We have to stop making bad fiscal and environmental decisions. Thank you.
Next we have Andrew Matoda.
Hi, this is, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
This is Andrew Matoda. I'm uh, a resident of the area that will be negatively impacted by if this permit is allowed to go forward. I do want to request an EIR. A lot of things have been neglected in the study for this project. One, there's a lot of talk about the house being away from the canal, but the driveway will be right next to the canal at Santa Teresa. It will be, it will prohibit animals from using the canal to cross under Santa Teresa. The, the driveway will also pose a hat traffic hazard to people coming down Santa Teresa. And also, um, there's going to be significant grading of the hillside next to Santa Teresa as well as further down. And now, um, there, this, yeah, the city keeps ignoring the laws of physics on this when they say the house is further away, but also you're looking down inside when you're above the canal on the property versus the residents that are below looking up. The canal hides the animals from them that way. So I want to request an EIR. Thank you.
Next we have Carolyn Stroh.
I am a member of Santa Clara Valley Audubon.
Hi Carolyn, we can't hear you. We'll move on to the next speaker and we'll come back to Carolyn. Uh, we have Zoe Segal.
Hi, my name is Zoe Segal and I am the Director of Climate Resilience at Greenbelt Alliance. I wasn't actually originally uh, here to speak on this item, so I'll keep this short. Greenbelt Alliance is an environmental organization that knows how important it is to build more housing to address our climate crisis. But this single family's home outside of the urban growth boundary is absolutely not the type of housing we need to build. This shouldn't even be an item up for discussion. If we can build single family homes outside the urban growth boundary, what's the point of even having it one? San Jose is in the middle of creating their housing element and there are plenty of parcels for single family homes. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Ramirez.
Hello, um, my name is Elizabeth Ramirez, San Jose resident. Um, I am in support of this project. The Gashwin family would be a wonderful addition to our community. Um, they have operated with integrity and been very sensitive to the potential environmental impact and have designed a sustainable home um, in this area and I believe it is their right to be able to build. Um, and I would just uh, hope that um, council votes in favor. Thank you very much.
Next we have Melinda.
Hello.
Yes, hi, we can hear you.
Oh yes, perfect. Um, yes, this is Dr. Melinda Costa. I have an office at Los Catos and I'm a resident of San Jose. And I request an EIR and I am in opposition to approval um, in the state that this is in right now for all of the um, factors mentioned by those in opposition um, with respect to wildlife as well as economic impact. And you know, want to point out that, you know, this is going to have a, if this were to go to fruition, it would have a permanent impact in the area. And so, you know, simply because a lot of work has been done, doesn't mean that it gets, you know, it should be um, kind of gone forwardward with because it seems to me that through um, what's been voiced here, there are a lot of things that have been left undone, like talking to the tribes and you're doing a formal EAR and there are a lot of gaps that still need to be done. And so it's really premature to even think about um, approving this at this time. Very premature and I really strongly oppose it.
Next we have John and Yumi Talba.
Woo, did you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I live on Manresa Court, wife and I, and we've been here over thirty years. Uh, I've walked that property. Matter of fact, I was up there viewing the property, realtor before the Gashwins bought the property. Uh, the wife and I hike around the area. There's no problem for any wildlife getting through or whatever. It, we see deer, uh, you know, we, we see the coyotes. Uh, it's happening. And I think, uh, you know, I appreciate those that are opposing it, but I for one firmly support it. And uh, the house would be seen from my front yard and my second bedroom window. My only advice would be, since you talked about trees, is to maybe have some uh, valley oak trees uh, planted below the house so that it can help uh, screen out the house without interfering with the view of the valley. But uh, I fully support it. I think there were five years and think the, the city, county, environmentalists, everyone have done an excellent job to it. If anyone has any doubts.
Hi John, sorry, your time is up. Next we have Sharon Luna.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sharon Luna and I just wanted to comment on behalf of the wildlife. How would you feel if you had to live with mitigations? I find that the, the project is a lovely project, but if there's mitigations even prior to having a full EIR, there's a problem. Animals don't always understand those mitigations. We need to look at protecting our environment. The callers that are saying that this is a unapproved project, it doesn't stop. It just keeps going. We need to protect our animals and our wildlife. Thank you.
Next we have Shawnee Kleinhaus.
Good evening Chair Bonilla and Commissioners. My name is Shawnee Kleinhaus. I'm the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I wish to emphasize that the proposed project is not adjacent to wildlife connectivity corridor. It is the wildlife movement, linkage, movement linkage identified as such by the habitat plan. Pathways for wildlife and the habitat plan provide substantive evidence that the entire property is critically important to wildlife movement. They're moving the house from one uh, site, location to another should have been studied as well. Because in this way, it's probably more impactful to wildlife movement than it was where it was initially uh, proposed. And this home, it's rare that so many organizations are concerned with one house, one home. We don't usually engage to this level and take that pleasing to consideration and ask for an EIR. Thank you.
Okay Chair, this concludes all of the hands raised.
All right. And with that, what we're going to go ahead and do is close public comment and we will now give the applicant uh, the opportunity to respond. The applicant has five minutes.
Everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Um, appreciate the engagement uh, by the community and those who've spoken in favor and um, you know, even those who spoke against, uh, it's always good to share our opinions and our hearts on what we're feeling and thinking. Um, I think that the, uh, some of the feedback, uh, particularly around studying the home and the demarcation, uh, that did take place. Just to kind of reiterate that, uh, once again, that's part of the reason why the last couple of years have taken place was to, after the home was moved, to make sure that the study addressed the current proposal before the board. So uh, there is uh, that was already addressed in those areas. Um, there's also, once again, the full studies have kind of communicated um, to address a lot of the concerns that have been shown. Uh, and that was covered in the beginning portion of the presentation uh, by the city and the environmental uh, agent who, Cassandra, who was covering that area. The, I really appreciate, once again, everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, you know, my door is still always open. Uh, I did hand out my contact information to the community who wants to give constructive, you know, uh, feedback and who wants to kind of be able to communicate with me. Uh, but we've definitely provided many years of that opportunity and we've taken those feedback and we've dedicated uh, the last, you know, two to three years in meeting and exceeding the criteria to make sure that we can address all these concerns. And so I would really kind of, you know, really ask the approval board to take that into consideration that we threw multiple rounds uh, of environmental reviews and feedback, uh, the city has determined that they're recommending this project. And I ask that you take that the carrying weight as it is. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, you are yielding the rest of your time, sir?
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open uh, the commissioner question portion. I am not I am not going to close the public hearing as I always do. I do keep it open in order to allow my colleagues to also ask questions directly of the applicant. So, Mr. Gishwin, if you can just kind of stand by as you may get a couple of questions coming your way. All right, colleagues, with that, do we have any of you wanting to make comment? Looks like Commissioner Cantrell, Commissioner Young. All right, we'll start with Cantrell, Young, then Lord and Wa.
Sorry, just had a couple of questions, actually. I'm curious. If there was an EIR done for this location, how long would that take?
Hi, Commissioner Cantrell. An EIR typically, to prepare, can take anywhere between nine months to several years, just depending on the time it takes to prepare the document. But the biggest distinction between an ISMD and an EIR is that an ISMD, in terms of length of time, an ISMD is circulated for public comment for either 20 days or 30 days if state agencies are requested for comment. And that's when they're of a significant wide importance, where an EIR is a 45 day circulation period. So for this project, as an ISMD, we did a 20 day circulation period.
Okay. And there seems to be some disparity between the belief that a proper impact study was completed. What, how does this, how does this occur? Why, why are there so many in the community that don't believe this work was done appropriately?
There, there might be a confusion about what an environmental document is reviewing. So when we prepare an environmental document and we know it's not going to be a categorical exemption, we prepare an initial study that analyzes all of Sequo's resource areas. And if we find that any impacts that are identified can be reduced to a less than significant level through mitigation measures, then we can issue what's called a mitigated negative declaration. If we determine that there are certain impacts that even with mitigation measures cannot be reduced, then you go through the process, that's the Environmental Impact Report, EIR. In terms of those two documents, besides the public circulation period, another big distinction is that an EIR is required to analyze project alternatives that consider other, other project designs that may reduce impacts. And then decision makers can, one, understand the impacts of the project and also understand impacts of alternative projects if they would like to proceed with an alternative design.
And one last question. How do we, how do we actually kind of justify the difference in the types of wildlife present? Based on, you know, what I've heard is that, well, mountain lions were never discussed. I ain't heard no discussion of coyotes. I'm curious, were those impacted or could those potentially be impacted or was that ever studied or what do we know?
I can briefly touch on it and if we would like a more detailed response, I may, may call on the biologist. But for Sequo, biologists do what's called protocol surveys. So it's, it's not an absence-present survey to determine every single species that's there. It's to look at the habitat and determine what the site can potentially support. So specifically, this project identified American badgers as well as nesting birds. That would require additional mitigation measures. It doesn't mean that the project didn't consider other animal species to use or pass through the site, but they didn't necessarily identify them living on the site.
Because those, those, I think even the resident says that he sees coyotes there and other animals that were not studied. I mean, that, if they're there, why would they be a part of the study? It is clear that those animals aren't there, correct?
Yes, I'm actually going to point, I see my supervisor, David Keon, has his hand raised.
Well, David can supervise and principal planner and the cities and brown review team. Thank you for the question. So the, the study goes into what is a threatened species. And we do have the project biologists that could also go into more detail about what goes in those studies. But if there's common species like raccoons, deer, coyotes, those aren't considered threatened species. So there's no mitigation measures needed. However, threatened species do have to be evaluated and addressed. And that is why we have the biological report. So that, you know, the importance of this site obviously is the the concern about the wildlife quarter and how this is going to affect the wildlife quarter, which includes species that may be threatened in addition to species that are more common.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see. I'm going to ask my colleagues indulgence because I have a number of questions, but I think it's going to be information that will be helpful to all the commissioners. First of all, we received an extraordinarily high amount of emails on this project, more than I've ever received. I've been on the commission a little under a year. I received over 50 emails with concerns about the project. Basically, not necessarily saying, don't build the house, the, every email I got says, require a fully IR before further consideration. And then also a petition was received with additional names and the letters that you've probably all read from the four different environmental agencies, sorry, environmental advocacy groups, as well as a legal opinion that was attached to one of those as well. And so I, I visited the site yesterday. I, I went, I started at the community garden. I talked to a couple of residents there, which was great. I walked up the trail, I walked the road along the canal down to San Teresa Boulevard. And so I think I have a good idea of the, the lay of the land there. I also walked down San Teresa Boulevard to the south. And literally, if you walk two minutes from there, you will see a sign that says, welcome to the North Coyote Valley. A very large sign and a very, you know, welcome to the Coyote Valley, we're, you know, we're glad we're preserving this property, which is wonderful, but what strikes me is this is the last sort of very prominent piece of property on the south side of San Teresa before the North Coyote Valley. So it's a pretty special piece of property and I, I think it requires special consideration, I guess is what I would say. So, before I ask my question, I want to point out to me, what is the question here? I don't think the question is whether the property should be developed or what the house should look like. I am firmly convinced that the Gishwin family is very upstanding, wonderful people. That's not the question. The question to me is, should a fully IR be required on this project before we consider it further? That's the question. So with that, I have a question for the applicant. Mr. Gishwin, I noticed there's a for sale sign on the property. So are you planning to sell the property before the house is developed or after? Or could you clarify that for us?
Our desire has always been to build and we are obviously here and still pursuing the building process. Unsolicited offers come in about every other month for the particular lot. And so, you know, our desire has not been to sell. But with the housing market being one of the best it is, we thought, you know, it might behoove to see an offer that we can get. But once again, our, for our first and foremost desire is to build and to continue that process, which is why we're here today.
Okay, I'm a little confused by that answer. So there is a for sale sign on the property, correct? Okay, so your first desire is to build, but you also have it for sale? That, that's confusing to me.
Yeah, so once again, yeah, our first desire is to build and to continue going with this process. But if someone's willing to give, make me move money, in short, because people keep contacting me for that, then I would be open to that. And so that is kind of why the sign is up there right now.
Okay, so if, for example, the open space agency wanted to acquire the property as open space, you'd be open to selling it to them, is that correct?
I want to kind of be open to selling to anyone if the price was make me move money.
Okay, great. I had made a request of planning staff that a representative of the Santa Clara Habitat Agency be present is, did that take, is there a representative present?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the habitat, just to clarify, the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency is an independent entity of the city of San Jose. The city is a partner agency. We are the ones to review applications for conformance and then submit them to the Habitat Agency. But given their role, it is not really appropriate for them to be attending meetings.
Okay, I, I don't understand that either. I'll just say, the Habitat Agency is the one that developed the Habitat Plan for the county and for them to be able to comment on this project, I think would have been helpful, but I'll move on. So I have a question for Cassandra. Cassandra, is the project biologist a city? Did the city hire the project biologist or is the project biologist you're referring to the consultant that the Gishwens retained back several years ago?
The project biologist works with LSA, who's an environmental consultant. And per city policy, the environmental consultant is hired by the applicant. However, all of the documents before they're posted online are reviewed by city staff to ensure that they meet city standards as well as Sequo standards. So we make sure that it expresses the thoughts and the thoughts of the city and doesn't represent review by an, by the applicant, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Young, then LSA is actually one of the CD Spray approved consultants, so they are on the CD Spray approved list.
Okay, great. Well, Cassandra, could we have the project biologist specifically talk about the wildlife corridor issue? Because that's my major concern and I, I think I shared that with city planning staff before this meeting. And, you know, I understand the house has been moved away from the canal, that's great, but the driveway is still next to the canal. The house looks down into the canal as one of the residents reported. So my concern is, well, I have a couple. I'll just say, one, I'm concerned that mountain lions were not included in the study and I'm not sure why that was. Maybe the biologist could comment on that. And secondly, whether the biologist has any concerns that because badgers and I would imagine mountain lions like to migrate at night, that if you have a house in a driveway with lighting and activity, isn't that going to create a hesitancy for those animals to move through the canal? So that's, those are my questions.
Steve, Stephen Forman to speak.
Hello, my name's Steve Forman. I'm with LSA Associates, I'm a principal and certified wildlife biologist with the firm. To your first question regarding mountain lions, the current protections for mountain lions under the state are to prohibit killing, direct taking of the animals. The, the protections that are currently afforded don't address habitat modification or effects to movement or other things like that. One issue why it wasn't addressed, it wasn't considered in our, our analysis for that, that basic reason. I'd also like to point out that the, the habitat conservation plan you referred to, that was probably a decade plus effort by a lot of people to come up with plans for conserving wildlife and plants in the Santa Clara Valley. The plan designates or understands and is considered development could occur within these parcels. They, they have a certain designation within the fee categories and everything else based on their current, you know, the zoning at the time the plan was done. The plan bases, their, the mitigation requirements for habitat alteration and everything on the fee payment schedule, they also have a number of other measures that they require. And one of the, one of the two of the requirements, they have plant survey areas that require you to do pre-surveys for plants and for rare plants, and then you have wildlife surveys that are required. The property that we're looking at now lies outside the wildlife survey area. There's a little bit of an area along San Jose that will require our plant surveys to be covered under the plan. And that plan is providing incidental take coverage for a variety of covered species under that plan. Now, to the corridor, that area is, it is a corridor. There's no doubt about it. There's a lot of good information available. And the main pinch point of that corridor for safe passage under San Teresa is the culvert of the canal. And so that's really a significant point. Once the animals are through the canal, they can move through a pretty broad area and probably do, well, actually they do, if you look at some of the data in the comment letters that we received from telemetered bobcats and other species. The presence of a, a single family home on a large parcel with large boundaries, in my opinion and experience, doesn't create a significant barrier. You have regulations to control lighting, to minimize spillover that could affect them. And also, and this applies to both coyotes, almost mountain lions and other species. They can become very habituated to human activity, where they're not threatened. So if nobody is out chasing them, shooting at them, yelling at them, they are pretty habituated to people and moving through. So that's basically the reason we didn't think there would be a significant barrier. There's no physical barrier created by the house. There's plenty of room to move around it on either side. And in my experience, the lighting associated with that type of residence wouldn't, would not create a significant barrier to wildlife moving through that area.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm almost done, Chair. And then I'll, I'll.
Please take it.
Yep.
Those are helping us too. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Manford. If we approve this project and it has entitlement and then Mr. Gishwin decides to sell the property to someone, will that entitlement go to the new property owner?
If that, the person who bought it wants to build as approved, yes. But if they, they make changes, they have to come back to the city.
Okay, but if they want to build as approved, they would have the right to do that, correct?
That's correct. If this is approved, yes.
Okay, great. That, that's all I have now. You know, clearly, I think I have, I have concerns about this project. I have concerns whether the mitigation measures are sufficient. But I'll, I'll, I'll stop talking now. I'm curious to hear what the other commissioners have to say and then I'll, when we're done with questions, I'll, I can come back with further thoughts. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Yeah, of course. No, thank you. We'll now go Lord and Wa, then Commissioner Ordinalis Weiss.
Thank you, Chair. And apologize to everyone if my voice is a little off and kind of under the weather today. So first off, I just have a process question about why we're having this discussion right now because, so my understanding is that the proper current land use designation, at least under the city, is open hillside, right? And that does allow this type of development. And my understanding is that if someone wants to build something that's consistent with the current land use, they don't need an entitlement. They can just go get the permits. So why is this particular project going through this process?
Commissioner, the, in this particular general plan designation, single family houses are allowed with a conditional use permit through a discretionary process. That's why we did.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So it's specific to this particular land use designation, okay? And then also, also just want to clarify based on how the agenda is written. Would we be tonight voting on a recommendation for the city council or would we be making the final decision on this project?
Uh, you'd be making the final decision on the project.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah. So I just want to echo the concerns of Commissioner Cantrell, Commissioner Young. I, the, we received multiple legal opinions from the public, uh, that mentioned animal species that are not mentioned at all in the staff report, um, like uh, coyotes were discussed, but also mountain lions and butterflies. Um, I, and then just in general, I am, uh, concerned about the overall prospect of further development outside the urban growth boundary. This some ways has excuse me, you and myself. I, I see parallels to our, uh, to the Coyote Valley discussion, um, late last year. Although obviously this is a much smaller scale. So that's kind of, I guess I, I'm little I'm between like, okay, this is on paper, a project that is, you know, is the type of project that this land use designation allows, but at the same time, I'm concerned that the mitigated negative declaration that we're being asked to approve does not adequately address the environmental impacts. So I guess also, um, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but, uh, I, this is the first time I've come across this open hillside designation. I'm just curious, again, I don't know if this is helpful, but I'm curious if staff can recall your recent examples of projects that were approved for development in that, on properties under that land use designation.
Sorry.
I, I was going to speak to recently CP eighteen dash zero zero three, um, was presented to the commission probably three-ish months ago, um, for a project on Fleming. Um, and that particular uh, meeting Commissioner Bonilla had to recuse himself, if that helps spark any reminder. Um, that particular house was open hillside, um, with an agriculture zoning district. So a little bit different. It actually had more limiting zoning district.
And this district is the same. It's also agricultural. So just look for information.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I think that's all my questions for now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ordinalis Wise.
I, 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 I have to echo a lot of the same, uh, concerns, um, in regards to the environmental impacts. Um, you know, I am looking at, you know, I had looked at the initial study. It looked, uh, really thorough. I mean, it was like very, very long. Um, but some of the things that I had concerns with was, uh, general plan policy, LU dash nineteen point eight states in part incorporated measures within new development to ensure substandard wildlife corridor protection. When I'm looking at the mitigation measures and the, you know, mitigated negative declaration, I see proper mitigation measures for what has been identified, but I don't see specific review in regards to protection or reviewing the wildlife corridor. Um, and it seems to be that there is, uh, significant evidence that this is seen as a wildlife corridor area. In, in fact, um, when I was young, when I was about like, uh, maybe ten, thirteen years old, something like that. We went to a party in Morgan Hill. We were taking Santa Teresa back and we had a little van and a deer came off the mountain like right there and we actually ran it over. So I know for certain that wildlife, uh, pasture there because, uh, of that situation when I was a kid. So some of these policies, uh, that I see in the general plan and I don't see the, any that it's not being addressed. Another, another, um, concern of mine was the cultural resources. It doesn't look like an archaeological report was done. Um, and the fact that the Aloney Trail seems to run really close to the property and yet there was no outreach to some of these tribal nations that, um, have a long history of being ignored. You know, uh, the Trail of Tears. So I can't help but be concerned with, um, the analysis. Um, I know extensive work was done. I see it. There, if, if I, I, if there was a new biology report, I don't think that, I, I'm not sure if we have a nexus here to require an EIR. I would require, I would suggest a new biology report that addresses the wildlife corridor protection, um, you know, and really looks at those general plan policies and maybe add some mitigation measures to that or really, um, discuss that a little further. I would like that. I would like, yeah, that, the archaeology report, um, and some communication with the tribes. That would be, um, what I think is missing from the environmental document. And, uh, you know, once that would be disclosed, I think, you know, I would feel more confident moving forward with the project, um, you know, given the amount of grading and length of, of the road. I just think that, um, some of this stuff, uh, should, should be, should have been included in, in the environmental review. That's, uh, what I have to say. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavira. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Or no, that's why I said, but this. Let me go ahead and, uh, Commissioner, is your hand up still?
He is, man.
Okay, cool. Commissioner Garcia.
So, you know, I, thank you, Chair. I, I share the concerns that my fellow commissioners have with the nature of the project, the impact to the habitat, the lack of an EIR. The plans, uh, are very incomplete. They're more focused on looking at the views from the neighborhood. I didn't see anywhere in there, the long driveway that's going to, um, be the, the, the road up to the property. But nevertheless, I just don't think enough mitigation efforts have been taken to allow this to fit with the characteristics of the neighborhood. And, um, absent any other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion, uh, to deny this application.
We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna weigh in, uh, but before that, let me, uh, do you have any other questions from colleagues?
I'd like to second Commissioner Garcia's motion to not deny the project.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. We have a second, but we have Commissioner Torrance and Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I wanted to weigh in. I've been listening. I've been reading about this project for a long time and, uh, and I just came tonight with a very open mind to, to, you know, cause that's what our job is as planning commissioners is to look at what we are presented and listen to all sides and then make our best decision. And so I just want to, uh, first appreciate the applicant, Mark. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time pronouncing your last name, so I'm not going to say it. So Mark, thank you for coming. I, as a neighborhood, um, person, really active in my neighborhood, I appreciate the fact that you went around to all those homes to introduce yourself and to try to be a good neighbor. And I, I really admire and respect that and that you've been at this for a long time. Um, what I've heard tonight is that the, the staff recommendation is that we approve the conditional use permit and that, that due diligence has done, been done on the part of the city to mitigate any negative effects. And and that this does fit with, uh, with the general plan. It's probably not what I would choose to do with this piece of property, but it is the right of the, the owner. It's within, you know, his legal right to, to build this. And I, I just know I have, um, in-laws who live on property up in Sonoma County on three acres and wildlife does still travel through there. And having a home of this size on sixteen, seventeen acres, it still really does give the wildlife room to move just as they have before. So those are just some thoughts I wanted to add to this discussion. Uh, I appreciate those who've spoken for and against the project. I, I really get both sides. And I'm not sure how I'm voting tonight, but I just felt like I needed to add that.
Commissioner Ordinalis Wise? Thank you for that, Commissioner Torrance. Commissioner Ordinalis Wise?
You know, I, you know, I know that the, the owners and the staff have done so much work to get to this point. Point is, is there a way of, of maybe not denying the project, but just asking them to make some modifications with the new biology report and archaeology report? And maybe, um, you know, some meetings with some of the tribes. Um, that's what I think was, you know, some of the concerns that I had or, you know, so I just wanted to, I mean, I don't know, talk to, you know, staff to see, you know, if, if we could approve or deny it, but not, I, I, I guess I'm not figuring out the proper words to say of, of just asking them to, to make some additional modifications to the environmental documents.
I'll let Pat speak to, um, how, how that motion could potentially look. I did want to identify an archaeologist, archaeological study was conducted. Those aren't made publicly available because they are sensitive. Um, so I did want to confirm that that was, um, provided and that, um, consultation did occur with one tribe. But we certainly, depending on the motion, could reach out to the tribe that sent in comments, uh, yesterday.
So, um, a point of order question for city attorney, I believe, if the commission wanted to, um, consider the project with, uh, updated biological information and any, uh, recommended changes to the project based on that report that it would require the project to be continued. However, we don't have a date certain by the time we'd have that information. So it probably have to be, um, not sure if it would be, uh, renoticed, dropped and renoticed, or what, what the exact terminology is.
In considering, uh, an approval of a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, the municipal code does allow uh, the planning commissioner or any decision-making body to either require the preparation of an EIR, uh, require that the, uh, mitigated negative deck be revised or undergo additional public review or withdraw the negative declaration if the public or if the applicant withdraws a project. In terms of moving forward, um, my suggestion would be to, because there's not a date certain, perhaps with, uh, schedule it for a later date to come back when all those documents are completed as opposed to just continuing it for future hearings, um, until that, until that's done.
Thank you for that, Mark. Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, no, that, that's good. I, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel in regards to, um, you know, continuing the item and having them do some modifications to the environmental document that was prepared and updating the biology report to include, um, you know, additional research on wildlife corridor protection. So.
Let me, while you're thinking about that, why don't, why don't I go to Commissioner Oliverio and then, um, let me know. I can come back to you.
Thank you, Chair. I think the suggestion by Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, um, is wise in that, you know, we have a process that started in twenty seventeen. Um, there's a process that went through with the Megan Neb Deck and staff. Um, and what she's asking for is a little bit more information. And I think the, also the important part that she mentioned was, you know, things come up during these public hearings where in this particular case, a particular tribe was not involved apparently, although there was other interactions with another tribe. But perhaps this could be a time then for that meeting to occur. And if staff is willing, and the applicant's willing to maybe hold it as a, another public hearing where, where the variety of interest groups and residents can speak and have staff, even though staff's done a, an eloquent job tonight, but also basically present. I, I, I don't like personally being in a position where I think professional planning staff has done the work, but there's still this, uh, fear, doubt and uncertainty of the work. And perhaps the, the suggestion by Commissioner Ordinalis Wise would provide the more information that has been asked for by speakers tonight, by other colleagues on the commission, plus provide that opportunity for the community to just really understand that everything has been answered fully and doodily and that this could come back when that work is complete. We don't put a date certain on it, but when that work is complete, uh, and we go from there. If the applicant thinks it's, it's not a good idea, they could withdraw. But ultimately, if the applicant feels that this is where they want to live and they need to go through this extra step to get planning commission approval, I think that would be a worthy, a worthy consideration.
That sounds fair and reasonable, Commissioner Oliverio. Thank, thank you for that. Does Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, I want to go back to you. Does that meet your needs here?
Yes, it does. Yeah, yes, it does. Sorry about this.
Okay. So now then the question goes to Mark. We now have a motion on the floor. It's got a first and a second. My understanding is there's a couple of ways this can be done. One, the makers of the motion in the second can withdraw. Or two, Commissioner Ordinalis Wise can do a secondary motion. Uh, am I accurate in that, Mark?
Yeah, both of them are correct methods for, uh, uh, dealing with the motion that's presently on the floor.
All right. So then what I will do then, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I was going to say, or, or that motion can be put to a vote and then if it fails, then, then we start over.
No, let's, let's do this then. Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, so why don't you make the request to the makers of the motion to first see if they'd be willing to withdraw?
The makers of the motion, uh, commissioners, would you withdraw your motion so I could make a second motion?
Well, my motion's already been seconded, so I, I believe we have to vote on it, but I don't, I don't see, uh, no, I'd like to vote on it.
All right. Well, then that leaves you, Commissioner Ordinalis Wise, with the opportunity to make a secondary motion, which would then set aside the initial motion and then we would vote on the secondary motion. Mark, uh, is that the course of actually like to take Commissioner Ordinalis Wise?
Yes, I'd like to make a second motion.
Okay, then, uh, you're, you're, let's, let's make, make sure that you're paired. Mark, Mark, can, can you step in here to make sure that the language is, um, appropriate in order for us to do this, right?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, if, my understanding of, of the motion is to follow, uh, the procedure under the municipal code for either having the applicant conduct an EIR or revising the mitigated negative deck. I can put up the, uh, relevant section as well if, uh, the commissioners would like to see that. If I can, I can share my screen.
That would be great. That, we all have clarity.
Yeah, here's. Sorry, this is the.
Before we go through this, I'm sorry. I, I need to, but I just want to be clear. Uh, the motion was to deny had nothing to do with the, the EIR. Is that correct? That was the first motion?
That's correct.
Okay, so no EIR being required from that first motion. The second motion, just to be clear, would not require an EIR, but additional study.
The sec, the second motion would be to continue the item and revise the mitigated negative declaration to include additional biology report that includes a wildlife corridor protection.
Um, point of order, Chair, could I just speak really quickly? So Commissioner Garcia, I want to make sure that you and I are, are in tune. I think we are. The mo, the motion Commissioner Garcia made, my understanding was deny the project. And if the applicant would like to reapply to do a fully IR first, Commissioner Garcia, is that correct?
Yes, deny the application. And if they want to resubmit a new application with more complete body of work, that they're allowed to do that.
Right. So, and that would be my feeling as well. I think, I think the amended motion, I'm concerned that we're really foggy here on what's going to happen. Um, I think it would be better just to go with the fully IR. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, we will now go ahead and allow for Commissioner Ordinalis Wise to.
And before, I don't want to interrupt, I just want to clarify, there are two actions that the, that staff is recommending, acceptance or certification of the MND and then approval of the project. I just want to clarify, it sounds like the motion that's presently on the floor is to deny both those actions, correct?
Correct.
And a further point is that staff would need to return to the planning commission with a resolution for denial, documenting the reasons why. And so we would need to, as part of that, recommend that the planning commission continue the hearing to July 13th in order to allow staff to return with a resolution of denial.
All right. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, Commissioner Nellis Wise, I want to go back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a second, second motion to continue the item, to revise mitigated negative declaration to include wildlife corridor protection through a new, new biology report and additional conversations with the tribal community on this project.
Do we have a second for the secondary motion?
Second, Chair.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if I could just pull it over myself. It's a question for Mark. I know earlier we talked about this substitute motion being for a modified mitigated negative declaration or a full EIR. I'm just wondering, like, is there, what's the substantive difference between the motion just saying a modified, like mitigated negative declaration versus that or a full EIR?
Well, I mean, it would just be, if there's a, a thing in the mitigated negative declaration that needs to be revised and undergo additional notice public review, then what will come back to the commission will be that revised mitigated negative declaration with that public review. If the commission's direction is to do a full EIR, then a full EIR will come back. And then the consequences, as Cassandra mentioned, there, you know, full EIR takes a little bit longer for the notice period as well as the standard of review is different if there's an appeal of the, of an EIR, as well as if additional evaluation will be done regarding the environmental impacts. And if there are significant impacts that can't be mitigated, then a statement of overriding consideration will need to be approved.
All right, perfect, thank you. Commissioner Oliverio, did you have a comment?
I did. To the maker of the substitute motion, did the motion or would the motion also include potentially outreach to non-tribal, meaning members of the community or members of the environmental groups that actually tonight have asked for this item to be deferred? Would that, would that be able to be included so that they'd have an opportunity to have questions with applicants and staff and really resolve what is, you know, what everyone agrees upon?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and go for a roll call vote on the secondary motion. Mark, is there anything else I need to do to make sure that we're doing this right?
No, just take, go ahead and take the, if there's any confusion or clarification on what the motion is, then my suggestion is to do that now, otherwise take the vote.
Perfect, no, I, I think this is reasonable. I think that the secondary motion is reasonable, gives all sides the opportunity to continue having a conversation. These things aren't perfect, but I, I do want to take into account that both sides have legitimate concerns and, and both sides have invested time into getting us to where we are. I, I, I just am not comfortable with a kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater approach, although I understand why. I do think that this, this compromise being proposed by commissioners or Nellis Wise and Oliverio gets us there. Because ultimately, going back to the, you know, the issue of questions, the question was more time, more conversation. And I think this motion does that. So with that, I weighed in and I will go ahead and call for a vote. O'Neal, yes? Cantrell?
I think this is a case of just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't. And I, I think we, we need to understand why you should or shouldn't by doing a detailed EIR to make that clear. So I'm going to have to vote no.
Perfect, Garcia?
No.
Lardino?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
No.
No, with that, the motion passes. All right. Ready to move on?
Chair, would you be amenable to a short recess?
Absolutely not, because you're, of course, of course. Five minutes, we'll go ahead and take a five minute recess. We'll be back at eight, 10 PM.
Thank you.
Great, okay, here we go. So parking, I know this is usually a very interesting topic, but I hope we can keep you awake tonight. So, but over the years, the city has been reevaluating its parking requirements and transportation demand, ma- management measures in decency and further implementation of both Climate Smart and the envisioned San Jose general plan. This work has actually been a joint effort between planning and the Department of Transportation. And it's being done under the umbrella of the American Cities Climate Challenge and our multi-departmental Climate Smart San Jose team. So as such, it's not just planning, it's the T. So joining me tonight is Wilson Tam, Wilson, who's going to be co-presenting, was the co-project manager of this work. Also from DOT is Ramses Wadu and Jessica Zhang. Ed Schreiner is the planning co-manager of this project. He's actually sick tonight. I think he is in bed listening to what's going on tonight, but I'm going to be pinch hitting for him tonight. So not just your secretary, I'm also pinch hitting. I should note, this work was funded by the American Cities Climate Challenge, which is sponsored by Bloomberg Philanthropies, which provide resources to cities such as San Jose to address climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions through a holistic approach that addresses, that focuses on building and transportation. So what we're going to present for you tonight is actually not an ordinance for your consideration. It, it is, we want to get your feedback on policy direction for changes for a new parking strategy, parking and TDM strategy, which would, will ultimately, we anticipate result in changes to our zoning code regarding parking and TDM. So we're just, we're asking for your feedback. We'll be taking this feedback that you give us tonight to city council to get there, to listen to our, our proposed direction or in, on which direction we should ultimately go. And then over the summer, we will actually prepare the ordinance, bring it back to planning commission in the fall for its consideration and then to council for its consideration as well. Next slide. So I'm going to just, oops, I got it minimized to all your photos here. There we go. So I'm, we're just going to kind of give you an overview of what we're doing here and, and why. And so what's the need for it and what are the issues that we're trying to address? So I think as you're all aware, is that we do have parking requirements for pretty much every use, almost everywhere in San Jose, be it residential, retail, office, industrial and, and schools. There are very limited exceptions to this. But yeah, so required parking when developers come in, they have to provide parking spaces consistent with our code. Next slide. Yeah, so these regulations are called parking minimums. They live in our zoning code and they're designed so that the supply of parking always exceeds demand. So there's almost always going to be empty spaces. We really plan around those very rare events. So minimum parking requirements are not unique. Most communities in, in the United States have parking requirements somewhere or yes, have them somewhere, maybe not everywhere, but in, in many, many places. Next slide. Next slide. So parking requirements, I've been around for a while. San Jose enacted a parking requirements in 1949. We required one residential unit. Really the sort of more, more comprehensive parking requirement and parking code came about in 1965, where we began to require parking spaces for really every use. And, and you know, we haven't done a comprehensive relook and analysis to revisit the code holistic since 1965. So this really is the, the first time that, that we're, we're doing this since that period. So at first glance, parking, parking minimums seem like a common sense policy. You know, that the idea is that, you know, development provides within enough spaces just to ensure that there aren't people parking on the street and there isn't spillover parking. And, and parking minimums, quite frankly, are there to ensure that on, at Oak Ridge Mall or Valley Fair Mall, that there's enough parking for everybody on Black Third after Thanksgiving as they do their holiday shopping. But the issue with parking is it assumes that, that, that the only way to get to point A to B is by driving and that everybody is driving. So parking, parking, parking minimums really are a blunt instrument that accommodate parking at peak demand and often are going to result in an oversupply of parking. Next slide. So the result of, of planning for cars and having parking minimums over the last seven years is that we built a city for cars and not for people. And we promoted small sprawl. So here's an example of, of North San Jose. It's North San Jose Animal Peters, where you can see the result of our parking policies and the type of environment that it's created. Next slide. So why is this a problem? So I'm going to cover sort of four areas and talk about how parking or acquiring a, a minimum amount of parking has created a, a number of challenges and problems for us. First, we have the issue of climate choice and traffic, how it affects business flexibility. And talk about parking and its impact and space and ecology, and also how it impacts housing affordability. Next slide. So I think one way to make this a little more accessible, a little more fun, is we're going to, we're going to create five imaginary people and we're going to walk you through sort of what parking looks like from their perspective. So we have Hasang, who's a renter, Julia homeowner, Tricia, who's an employer, a business owner, Catherine, who's a developer, and Angel, who's a staff person. Next slide. So the first problem we're going to talk about is related to climate choice and traffic. So parking minimums, by making it appear to free, free, that parking is free to people who drive. But as you know, in life, very little is free and parking is certainly not free. Next slide. So with all this parking available, people like Julie have an incentive to drive. It's free, why not? There's plenty of parking. And even though Julie is open to walking, riding transit, even biking in the area where there's a store down the street, they tend to get in their, she tends to get car and drive there. Next slide. And so most people in San Jose are making similar decisions, often unjustly. If you build a city, if you, if you build a city built around the car, people are going to drive. Next slide. So a city designed for cars and means more driving and more traffic that goes with it. And so a term that you probably have heard and you'll hear a lot more word is what we call VMT. And it really, what it stands for is vehicle miles travel traveled, excuse me. It's a metric for how much people drive. Next slide. So parking is a well-known determinant of VMT. In other words, more park leads to more driving. The easier it is to drive, the more people will drive and the more greenhouse gas emissions that will result from that driving. Now, I so, in, in, so in fact, more than half of the greenhouse get greenhouse gas emissions in San Jose came from transportation. Much of that is simply people driving to work. So the challenge for Angel or for us, myself and Ed and, and Wilson is trying to help San Jose become climate neutral by 2030. And frankly, we will not be able to reach our city's climate goals or the Paris accord, which we signed up for if we don't tackle transportation. And we just acknowledge that of course, the electric vehicles are vehicles are part of the solution. More and more people are driving Chevy Volt's and Teslas and we anticipate that going to continue. Next slide. But EVs won't help our traffic problem because they take up EV's electric up just about a space as, as conventional cars. And you know, also, it's not that electric vehicles are environmental impact free, have lifecycle emissions, they generate electricity and there's issues with disposing them. And there's going to be more and more challenges actually with getting the minerals that are needed, the materials that are needed to create batteries. Next slide. So even with the widespread electrification of cars, we still need to incentivize other transportation options like walking, biking, transit and carpooling. So from an environmental and a choice perspective, eliminating many part, eliminating mandatory parking minimums would more easily encourage us to drive less, lower our VMT, make walking, biking and transit more appealing and get us target of being a carbonless city. Next slide. The next issue I'm going to talk about is how minimum parking requirements don't facilitate or provide business flexibility in some situations. Next slide. So the example we're going to use today, tonight is Tricia, who Tricia has a booming, I'm going to say it's a booming restaurant business and she's looking to open a new location. She's doing what so well she wants to expand. She found a location, but city codes, you cannot rent this unless she provides more parking than currently exists. And if you can't find that park, you cannot occupy that space. And this is even though many of her employees could transit and many of her customers could walk to this location. So, uh, so we also acknowledge that preferences have been shifting even before the pandemic. For example, more and more people are shopping online. People are starting to use Uber or Lyft more and people are working from home. Next slide. This sees these, these trends and wants to convert her rear parking lot into a pop-up event space. This is something that's very commonly done during the pandemic. But you can't again, because of parking minimums, take a timeout or stop for just a second and that the city does actually have Alfredo right now in effect. It was really a temporary code that allows restaurants and other businesses to put, move their business out into the parking lot using required parking. That Alfredo program is set to buyer in December 20, December of this year. So if we don't move forward with something, it potentially could expire and we're back to situation I'm describing here. Right? So the next I'm going to talk about the parking, particularly an overabundance of parking has in land space and ecology. Next slide. So part not appealing places. And I just want to note that our general plan envisioned San Jose 2040 actually has a subtext which says creating a city of great places and parking lots are not the kind of thing that create a city of great places. And I just want to note, one of my professors, Alan Jacobs, who's the author of Great Streets, he was the planning, he was the planning director of the city of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and the city of San Francisco. And he said that think of those places in the world that have an abundance of parking. Those are often not the places I would want to be. They are not great places. Next slide. So these, so outside of functioning, the car parking, these parking areas do not add a lot of value communities. All this for parking pushes destinations apart, creating yucky or unfriendly walking and bicycling environments, which in turn makes it less appealing to walk, bike and take transit. And again, creates more incentives for driving and, 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 and creates in turn more traffic. Parking, of course, takes up a lot of space, which is why parking often contributes to a unpleasant environment. So what you see here is how much parking space is required for each square foot of a particular use. You have a restaurant, you have a gym and you have an office and you have an apartment. I think there's another pop-up. You might want to just hit that pop-up, Wilson. So what you can see is particularly in the restaurant and in the gym and even the office is that a lot of the land area, actually more of the land areas occupied for parking percentage is actually for the primary use. So parking takes up a lot of space. Next slide. The land area in San Jose is fixed. The space for parking is not used for something else. For example, housing, stores, open space and offices and industrial type of uses. Next slide. This isn't really, I'm not even talking about the negative ecological impacts of this surface parking. So lots of parking can create habitat loss. It's a loss of open space for people to play in. It creates challenges with stormwater and drainage. And of course, it's a major cause of heat island of urban areas actually being hotter than the surrounding non-urban area is. Next slide. So the next issue I'm going to talk about our problem that is created by excess parking is a housing affordability. So I just want to know the parking is really expensive to build and maintain. So constructing parking ranges for service being around $34,000 in space to up to $75,000 of space for underground parking. And I think this, you know, this is, people don't think about the cost of parking. They just think, oh, it's awesome. I'm gonna go to the store. It's, it's of course it's free. Why wouldn't it be free? But as we know, not much is free in life. So parking has a cost. Next, next, next slide. And the cost show up everywhere in our lives. So because parking is expensive to build, it often results in higher rents for tenants because they are paying rent to rent and the actual living space that they live in, regardless of whether they use the parking or not. It results often in higher purchase is right because you know, the developer has to build spaces for the cars for housing the car as well as the purchaser of the home. And it can often result in more expensive goods and services. Next slide. And we just have to be mindful that many people in San Jose, including I saw in this, in this example, don't need car parking. So there are a lot of people that are young, older, people with lower incomes, people with limited vision that, that don't use cars. And we really planned a city on assuming that just everybody drives and not for people, not for those that, that either can't or choose not to drive. Next slide. So kind of moving on to an example of developers. So in this, in this hypothetical example, developer Catherine would like to build without parking minimums because she could build more homes. They could be more affordably priced. Next slide. And if she were able to do, I say would have more affordable housing options, better suited her budget and her car-free lifestyle. She'd just have to pay for her living space and not, and not for the storage and car. So at the end of the day, regulations tell us a lot about our values and priorities. But today, empty housing for cars takes precedent over housing for people. I just want to note that I know that the idea of eliminating parking requirements is, sounds like a very bold and radical move. But not on the forefront here, as you can see from this map, many cities around the country have removed mandatory parking requirements, minimum parking requirements, either for the whole city or in certain parts of the city, such as downtown and transit areas or in Main Street area. So you can see even down in Mexico and Canada and throughout, there's a lots of cities that are moving or have moved in this direction. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Wilson, who's going to talk about transportation demand man aspect of our proposed policy framework.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning. Good evening, planning commissioners. This is Wilson, Transportation Planning Manager at DOT. And Michael just shared or such presented one side of the coin, which is the parking strategy. And just to reiterate, just to reiterate, our recommendation is to eliminate the parking minimum requirement citywide. And just want to share that like just reducing or removing the parking minimum requirement citywide does not solve the climate and transportation issues. We also want to make sure that as, as the, you know, the developers are going to build the number of parking spaces that are needed by the market and the community. We want to make sure that in order to reduce traffic or reduce transportation, uh, vehicular footprint, we want to make sure that we are able to improve the transportation options for the community so that people see that there are a wide range of transportation options such as walking, biking and taking transit to address their daily transportation needs. And so I'm going to talk about the second side of the coin, which is the TDM strategies. TDM is not a new concept. Today, the city has TDM requirement and TDM is defined as a set of transportation strategies that could increase the transportation options so that people are encouraged to not drive and take other means of transportation such as like walking, biking, taking transit and carpooling. Then today, the city has created or already established a menu of options of these TDM measures for the development to, 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 you know, to satisfy the city's requirement. You may have heard about Sequel, you may have heard about, uh, you know, local transportation analysis. There are a lot of like city rules today that require development to provide these TDM measures. And now as recommendation here, as presented, we would like to really streamline the process and really try to provide clarity to the developers for what transportation demand management would help maximize the transportation options for their tenants and workers so that people who occupy the new buildings would be enjoying the transportation options provided to them. And just to summarize what the 30 measures that we are, that we have in the city today, these 30 TDM measures are primarily categorized into these four buckets. We have a set of TDM measures related to land use such as more mixed use settings, more higher density or more affordable housing. We have another bucket of TDM measures called street infrastructure and they are more related to building the street infrastructure improvements related to pedestrian environment and transit environment, things of that nature, so that people could enjoy walking, biking and taking transit around. The third bucket is related to parking. And as Michael presented in the first part of the presentation, uh, there are a series of parking strategies in the TDM menu that the developers can choose. For example, building more bike parking, shared parking, et cetera. Last but not least, we have the programmatic, programmatic measures such as providing transit subsidies to the tenants and also unbundling parking and other bike share, car share subsidy, things of that nature. And you know, these four categories of TDM measures with a total of 30 options would be provided to the developers. And this vote trust gives us some understanding about the flow or the workflow about how TDM work in the city. We would like to propose that we are able to streamline this development review process so that when city staff provide a menu of options to the developers, they will see, hey, these are the options that I can choose from to satisfy this TDM requirements. We did not talk about the point system, but this is the framework that we are trying to develop in order to streamline the process that the development can just check the boxes and select the options that would help them meet the requirement. And these options will be provided to the future tenants such as the renter Hassan or Homer or Julie, they will be enjoying these TDM measures moving forward. When we meet with the, our, our CPO partners and work with the community about these options and these workflow, we were, we understand that the major concerns is really about addressing equity and also from the developer's standpoint, they really want us to streamline the process to that, so that we can provide more clarity, so that they know exactly what they need to build in order to proceed. And also wanting to make sure that these TDM measures are not unintentionally causing some cost, you know, implications for the developability of the, of the projects. And so, once we are able to get an input from you tonight and also the council next week, based on the direction, we will be, you know, devising our ordinance updates accordingly in order to address equity, streamlining and cost of the development to bring forth a legal ordinance for the council to consider later in the year. And so after just highlighting the staff recommendation for TDM, just want to take a step back about like why we are proposing to establish a citywide TDM program. So as we know, the city is going to grow by at least 40% in the next 20 years. And so more development means more people coming to the city. And so TDM is actually the framework or the program that provides all sorts of great things for the community to enjoy. And without negatively impacting traffic and parking. So how do we get from a auto-centric sprawl development style to something like this with more urbanized development with more amenities? People can enjoy all sorts of transportation means to get around the city are the combination of these two things, right? We, we've just talked about the parking strategy, trying to eliminate the parking minimum requirement so that we won't incentivize driving over other means of transportation. On the other side of the coin, we would like to promote all sorts of transportation options with high quality infrastructure and programs. And for, yeah, so, so this is it. And this removing parking or reducing or removing parking minimum requirements would not stop a developer from building more parking if he or she thought that market conditions warranted it. But the development would not be forced to build more parking than necessary. And this is where the TDM program comes in, right? Because the idea here is really to help the development provide, make sure they provide adequate and high quality walking, biking and transit environment so that the future tenants of the buildings would not rely on automobile and parking, but more on the other wide spectrum of transportation options. And if the developer decides to build less parking, then that means like she has more space to build other things such as more affordable housing, more amenities and more things for people to enjoy. And that could mean that this could fulfill a huge part of the TDM requirements and they may require less TDM And that could mean that this could fulfill a huge part of the TDM requirements and they may require less TDM for 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 satisfying the city requirement. Because like low parking, shared parking and unbundling parking are already on the menu of TDM strategies. But if a development decides to build a lot of parking, what does that mean? It means that she, he or she would choose other strategies from the TDM menus such as the four buckets of strategies that I just shared in order to to provide, you know, many options for the future tenants and causing them to to rely less on automobile. And and in effect, it would reduce congestion, pollution and greenhouse gas emission. And because we know that like more parking means more traffic. And in other words, we really want to align our policies, which is what we are discussing tonight, with our shared goals, which is to address climate issues and transportation issues and affordability issues and the four problems that Michael just shared at the beginning of the presentation. And together, this is our opportunity to address climate by reducing our carbon emissions. It improves the choices so that it provides more transportation options for the community. It addresses traffic because it would reduce incentives to drive. It would create flexibility by increasing options for the businesses deciding on how much parking they would provide and how many TDM measures they would provide their future tenants. And also allocating more space for people, jobs and and other source of land uses. It also addresses housing by providing more housing, more affordable housing and more clarity to the developers. And and we just presented five personas, right? But as more people come to the city, we have various or diverse needs of of transportation. And so like these strategies like parking and TDM really create an environment to address diverse needs of people a lot more than what we just presented tonight in terms of the five personas. So this slide kind of summarizes the staff recommendation. And as Michael said earlier, we would like to present to you and the council next week, two additional alternatives in terms of parking. So first, the staff recommendation is to eliminate the mandatory parking minimum citywide. And the two alternatives would be alternative one being eliminating the mandatory parking minimums elsewhere except for single family zones. The second alternative would be to eliminate the mandatory parking minimums in the growth areas per the general plan. If you ask us like why we are proposing the preferred alternative or the staff recommendation and additionally to other alternatives. When we we presented the staff recommendation to our communities and also our council officers and council members in the last few months. And we were advised that it would be great to accompany the staff recommendation with other alternatives for the council to see the whole spectrum of possibilities, knowing that other cities, some cities may have eliminated the parking minimum as a city, citywide, and some other cities as Michael presented earlier have eliminated parking minimum in only a certain areas of the city. And so, therefore, we are presenting two scenarios here. One with eliminating parking everywhere except for the single family zones, knowing that, you know, we have a state housing bill such as SB nine that really allows a single family housing to with the ADUs to get by or get around the citywide parking minimum requirement to build less parking. And so we feel that like single families housing is a concern in the city. And and this alternative may present a scenario where we allow some flexibility still for the single family housing to determine how many parking spaces they would provide, given the backup for these state laws such as SB nine and others. The second alternative is to eliminate parking minimum just in the planned growth areas of the city with the understanding that the majority of our future growth will be located in urban villages or downtown or North San Jose employment centers. And would it make sense to just eliminate the parking minimums in those areas and keep the existing parking minimum everywhere else in the city? And we did a high level assessment about those three alternatives. And as you can imagine, in there are, you know, all three areas, all three scenarios help, you know, they have some level of elimination of parking minimum. And so, but they have varying levels of benefits, benefits associated with what we just presented earlier in this presentation. And so, as staff, we really would like a planning commission and a council to really consider the staff recommendation, which is to eliminate the minimum parking requirement citywide. Yeah, so this is this slide summarizes the staff recommendation with parking, we would like to propose to eliminate the mandatory parking minimum citywide. And on the TDM side of the things, we would like to propose to update the TDM requirement citywide streamlined the CEQA process. So they provide more clarity and more and less vagueness with the developers. And also to develop a TDM program for the ongoing monetary monitoring and compliance process with the developers, ensuring that the TDM measures that are selected by the developers to satisfy the city's requirement are going to be eventually provided to the future tenants of the building as they as they are occupied. Sorry.
Good, no, no, before you go on, Commissioner, I see that you had your hand up for quite some time. Did you want to ask a question now?
Presentation here, can you just let us finish? We have like this.
But I saw my colleague's hands. I wanted to recognize that. Perfect. Go ahead, Wilson.
Thank you so much, Chair. Yeah, so with that, let me hand it back to Michael to wrap this up with the timeline.
Yeah, sure. Actually, I let you keep going, but that's okay. So, um, the so just kind of this is kind of a timeline where we been been. I think what's really really important though is thinking about where we're going. By the way, I think there's only a couple of you that were in the, we had a planning commission study session with, but I think there was only a couple of you that were there back in twenty twenty two. Some other milestones is we already have a TDM and parking approach, which this is is very or two that's been approved by council in the various apart urban village plan. We're here today with you to talk about our proposed approach, getting your feedback, which will relate to the city council. And then we'll be bringing back based on council direction and ordinance for your consideration in the council consideration in the fall. And I'm going to leave it. And that concludes our presentation and we will turn it back for over to you all for questions and discussion.
Chair, you're on mute. I believe you're trying to speak with us.
Thank you for that. Yes. Can I get a show of hands as to who wants to go on public comment? As of right now, it looks like we've got. All right, we'll go ahead and limit public comment to one minute and go ahead and start a public comment.
We have Zoe Segal.
Hi, I'm Zoe Segal and I'm the Director of Climate Resilience at Greenbelt Alliance. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on reviewing parking minimums tonight. As you know, San Jose has ambitious climate and housing goals that cannot be met without addressing parking minimums. Um, part pillar two of Climate Smart San Jose has policies and actions to reduce thirteen hundred thousand tons, thirteen hundred thousand tons of carbon reduced per year and VNT per capita per day reduced by fifty seven percent by twenty fifty. And this cannot happen without significant changes to parking minimums. This will also further so many other goals the city staff has identified throughout the the general plan. There's approximately eighty general plan policies that the removal of mandatory parking minimums and the extension of TDM would advance. I would like to urge you to support the staff recommendation to prepare a parking reform ordinance that removes mandatory minimum parking requirements, updates the city TDM program and and develops a program for ongoing monitoring and compliance. I would like to urge you to approve staff recommendation. Thank you.
Next, we have Joanna Goodman.
Hello, this is Joanna Goodman. I'm Executive Director of Urban Environmentalist. And we work to support transformation of cities and towns into more sustainable and just communities through land use policy reform. I'm also calling in support of the staff recommended option. As the staff noted, there are so many positive environmental benefits to parking reform. And these include urban info can be made easier as well as so much. Besides, less driving, of course, and it's also an environmental justice issue. Having less infrastructure for cars means less pollution and less urban heat island effect and other negative impacts that particularly affect low income and communities of color. So once again.
Sorry, Joanna, your time is up. Next, we have Catalyze SV. If you can please state your name for the record.
I'm Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. Every month, Catalyze SV members evaluate developments. When we do, we see project after project burdened by outdated problematic parking mandates. The current nineteen sixty five mandates are bad for us. Too much parking means fewer community benefits and homes we actually need. San Jose's nineteen sixty five population was one third of what it is today. Orchards were all around, traffic was much lighter, but San Jose trolleys had disappeared, VTA hadn't even started service yet, and scooters didn't exist. Back then, the car was undisputed king in California. Really, the car has been a dictator dominating too many facets of our lives while trapping us in traffic and polluting our air. It's time for us to plan San Jose more democratically, give us healthy, safe and sustainable choices on how we get around. The time has come for change. Our city has changed. Our community is innovative. Our people are adaptable.
Sorry, your time is up. Next, we have Ruth Callahan. Ruth Callahan, if you can please unmute your device. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to the next speaker and get back with Ruth. We have Giovanni.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. As a middle class member of the community, I'm a Latino from San Jose. I I kind of, this sounds to me kind of like a bad idea. It's already hard enough for people to survive in San Jose as it is now. So taking away parking lots sounds kind of like a power grab to me to force people not to drive. And it's clearly what they said, it's to force people not to drive. We shouldn't be forced out of our comfort zone because you feel like we shouldn't be driving to so-called save the planet. Driving is necessary. A lot of people have to drive for a living and to get to work. We depend on parking lots to go places when we're out in the public. It actually makes it convenient for people when there's more parking. People do not want to go out if there's no parking. You guys work hard to try to make us middle class people in the community sacrifice for something that doesn't benefit the community in any way, not in my opinion. It makes people want to be stuck at home. We want more reasons to be out, not less and be and, you know, it's that driving can be therapeutic and soothing. And, you know, people shouldn't have to walk a mile from their home, I mean, from their parking to get to their home. They should be able to have a parking space at their at their place of living and for some visitors. That's my opinion. That's all I have.
Is that everyone?
Chair, I was just muted. Is it okay?
Go ahead. Yes.
Good evening, Chair Bonilla and Planning Commissioners. My name is Ally Saperman. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition to speak in strong support of the staff recommendation to repair a parking reform ordinance that removes mandatory parking mandatory minimum parking limits, updates the city's TDM requirements and develops a program for ongoing monitoring and compliance. Across our state, more than ninety seven percent of cities and counties have been unable to produce enough affordable housing. If we're going to take our state's housing prices seriously, we need to use every possible tool to build more housing. We're raising money to fund more affordable housing, but cities and developers are running into these challenges with these antiquated parking requirements. This means we're getting even less housing and even less affordable housing. Meanwhile, we're wasting money maintaining unused parking lots. Please support the staff's preferred recommendation to eliminate parking minimums citywide. Thank you so much. Next, we have Sarah Elko. Sarah, if you can please unmute your device.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Elkutsby-Ead. I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council, expressing the strong support for San Jose's staff proposal to remove cities' minimum parking requirements and update and expand adoption of TDM strategies. As part of the Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge, we're really excited to see San Jose join many other climate challenged cities that have adopted similar climate action policies on parking and TDMs. This proposal is a critical tool to reduce the biggest source of emissions while also making San Jose homes more affordable. Parking and TDM policies are critical to increasing access and affordability for all people, especially for those in San Jose who use public transportation the most, which are people of color and low and middle income people. This is one of the most important actions you can take to promote social equity and economic security. We urge you to adopt the strongest and most effective recommendations by San Jose staff and prepare an ordinance to remove parking requirements and implement TDM. Thank you.
Next, we have Lalo Mendez.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Lalo Mendez. I'm the Project Development Specialist for Catalyze SV, but tonight I will be speaking on my own personal behalf. I am here to urge you to support the staff's recommendation to modernize San Jose's parking policies and TDM measures. As we heard tonight, building parking can be very expensive and this costs always passed down to renters, people like me who are rent burdened more than ever. This change will make it easier and cheaper to build a large housing project by building parking by demand, not following a mandate from fifty years ago. We can't also forget about the TDM measures. I grew up as the son of a single mom. We are immigrants. I took the bus everywhere. I took it every single day to go and serve burgers across town. I took it almost every day to go and access classes in my local community college. So having a robust bus system is what's allowing me to thrive and be pursuing a master's degree here in San Jose today. So I hope that you take into consideration how successful this policies can be implemented, right? And I urge you to support the staff's recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Sungita.
Hi, my name is Sungita Sarkar and I'm an organizer at Save the Bay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide comment tonight. I'd like to urge the Planning Commission to support the staff recommendation to prepare a parking reform ordinance that removes mandatory minimum parking limits, updates the city's TDM requirements and develops a program for ongoing monitoring and compliance. San Jose has set forth ambitious climate goals, including pledging to go carbon neutral by twenty thirty. However, if driving is still incentivized through minimum parking requirements, emissions from vehicles will make it difficult to meet these goals. Removing parking minimums will also help protect the bay from polluted runoff. Parking lots tend to be large paved areas that increase polluted stormwater runoff, negatively impacting water quality in San Jose's creeks, rivers and ultimately the bay. San Jose is seeking to be a leader in climate action and removing parking minimums would be a significant step towards that goal. Thank you.
Next, we have Matthew Reed.
Yes, good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Reed and the Director of Policy at Silicon Valley at Home. We are here in support of the staff's recommendation. We agree with most of what you've heard so far. Parking is a real barrier in terms of cost, in terms of design, to developing housing and affordable housing throughout the city. This is not a policy that eliminates parking. What it eliminates is a mandated minimum, and so it allows project specific decisions to be made. project-specific decisions to be made, flexibility in the hands of developers, and even responsiveness to community in a situation in which otherwise the current policy is really standing in the way of progress and flexibility. Thank you.
Next, we have Erica Pinto.
Good afternoon, Chair Bonilla, Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Erica Pinto, San Jose Planning Policy Manager with SPUR. We truly appreciate the work done by city staff to analyze options and propose strong actions to address the impacts of parking requirements on San Jose's future. The item you have before you today has a potential to address longstanding policy issues related to parking minimum requirements that curtail the city's goals to make housing more affordable, build density, and support public transit, as well as, as well as advance the city as an environmental leader. In order to meet the need to reshape the city around people instead of cars, the city must pursue strategies like these to change and contribute to removing the overabundance of parking. Staff's proposal to eliminate mandatory parking requirements is a bold step that will guide future development and will go far to address housing affordability via the upfront of construction costs and later through potential options like unbundling parking from housing. We strongly support the recommendations purposed by the city staff and stand ready to continue to partner.
Next, we have Chris.
Hello, my name is Chris Gian Greco. I'm the Traffic and Transportation Liaison for the Winchester Orchard Neighborhood Association. Our main concern with this proposal is the opportunity for unintended consequences to occur within areas near developments, you know? If overflow parking occurs as a result of not building enough parking, that could inundate neighborhoods, adjacent neighborhoods, diminish quality of life for those residents in those neighborhoods. This should be considered as part of the planning process and taken into account for. And my big question is, how will the municipality and its departments correct for any of these spin-off problems that may occur? I've sent each of the commissioners an email regarding this. Please read that and.
Sorry about that, Chris. Your time is up. Next, we have Patrick Segman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Segman. I'm a transportation planner and economist. I've led the development of dozens of parking studies throughout California, and I've helped many cities remove minimum parking regulations. And I want to make two points. First of all, to address the previous speaker's point, we now know how to manage on-street parking in ways that make sure to protect existing residents, in ways that let existing residents continue to park for free, and yet keep out spillover parking possibilities from new developments, or actually any existing problems with spillover parking from other places. The technology is much better. That's why hundreds of cities throughout the world have now removed their minimum parking requirements and reaped tremendous benefits. I encourage you to follow suit. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ruth Callahan.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Ruth Callahan. I'm the President of the Coosier Woods Neighborhood Association, and we have a specific problem with any elimination of single-family homes, parking spaces. You need a garage, you need a driveway, we need a parking space on the street for our guests. Spillover parking is going to be a very hard thing to manage. We have down the street, across from our homes, 188 units being developed with 74 parking spaces. And the city council removed all parking requirements in affordable housing bills already in planned or unplanned villages. You are going to have a terrific problem. We are totally against this. Please do not eliminate single-family housing parking and stop the infill density of this city.
Chair, this concludes all of the hands raised.
All right, perfect. With that, we will now close public comment, and I will now open the floor to comments and questions from my colleagues. All right. Oliverio Cantrell.
Thank you, Chair. Could the staff be so kind as to put up the last slide again? And by the way, I enjoyed your PowerPoint art. Maybe it's second to last. Yeah, there we go. Another one of the dates, boxes and dates. Okay, great. So between June 2022 and fall 2022, and I, and I apologize if I missed this. Does, does this require any environmental review, or it's just simply that's exempt?
Martina, do you want to answer that? I mean, you are, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, so it's not going to be exempt. Martina Davis, Division Manager, hello, everybody. We don't plan to have it. It will not be an exempt from CEQA. There will be a review, although we, I believe at this point, are anticipating consistency with the general plan EIR, because this is policymaking, and so individual projects would be evaluated for impacts. So that's the path we're going toward, but we will be completing that analysis and when have it back when we have the full ordinance to the commission and then council.
So, thank you. So assuming Planning Commission and City Council approves something, and then a project, and it's, and a project comes forward, you'll apply the policy to the project, and the project may meet the policy or may not, and if it doesn't, then it has to do environmental review for reduced parking, or?
No, no.
Commissioner, this is Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. Parking is no more a CEQA impact issue area to address unless there is a nexus between that and a physical and environmental impact.
Okay.
So this will be actually woven into the city code. So if a, if a project complies with it, then it's okay. But parking is not going to be, it's a social impact, no more economic impact.
Understood. Thank you very much. And then, and then the public hearings will be limited to the three I see in the box, airport land use, planning, and city council hearing?
Correct.
Okay, and then? Oh, and then what is the, the planning want from the commission? Do you want comments? Or do you want us to choose one of the options?
Well, so staff has our preferred direction, which we presented. There's two alternatives. We're just seeking back and input comments from the Planning Commission that we will then take, report to the city council as they consider the direction to give staff.
So no motion, just comments?
Yeah, so it's accept the staff. I think it's on the agenda. It's accept the staff, we'll provide comments to staff that we will relay to the city council. Let me pull up the agenda. One, I may have their computer. But go ahead, continue.
Sure, thank you. No, I know. There's a lot of feedback we received in the, in the past week. Much of it from organized groups that, and residents don't, don't live in San Jose, and that's fine. You can advocate wherever you like. However, I do feel, you know, the public needs an opportunity to hear about this, and that certainly comes through meetings like this, and then, of course, the other three meetings you've denoted. On a personal preference, I think when you eliminate parking requirements in single-family home zoning for San Jose residents, because this impacts, we're talking about San Jose, you lose all goodwill that went into the general plan 2040 where we decided to grow the population by 40% with an additional 400,000 people in strategic areas. And I think when you're looking at those residents, it will be very impactful. So I think we need just to acknowledge that. Whether you're on one side of the issue or not, that is opening up a large contingent of people to perhaps be unhappy. So I think that's something we need to take in account. And then SB 9 has already done a portion of this by eliminating all parking requirements within a half mile of a bus line. So there has been a change in single-family home neighborhoods based on state legislation. But from what I understand, part of the, one of the potential proposals would to be to impact every other single-family home. And I just would say we should tread lightly. Otherwise, we will lose community support for what the city is trying to do in building housing in the right places and at the right densities, next to transit, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, now, go to, oh, go ahead, Michael.
So I just, I do want to make a note. I didn't get into it because I think we're, the commission wanted to go on a discussion, but we have done a lot of outreach on this. We've actually connected with over 1,200 discreet individuals, getting their input on this, on this proposed direction. And we're going to continue to do that over the summer. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and that's all I have.
I'm sorry, Chair, may I ask one more question then?
Sure, of course.
Uh, Michael, when you say 1,200 discreet individuals, that, does that mean like bona fide neighborhood associations? Or like a public hearing that was a scheduled public meeting where every neighborhood resident could attend?
Yeah, so we've gone, we, we've gone to neighborhood meetings. We've had, most of it has been online because we were forced to do it online, but initially we did it in person. I remember we went to the, was it the Willow Glen? I think it was either Lincoln Avenue or Willow Glen Association Neighborhood Meeting. I went to that one. But we, yeah, so it's been individual meetings with different groups. It's been more larger-based community meetings. As we've had focus groups. We've had, we've had partners that have done outreach with us, Green Belt Alliance, Luna, to, to income, to, for example, communities in East San Jose. So we've had a lot of outreach. So I just want to say, you know, I, I think, I just want to acknowledge that we've done a lot of outreach in this. And it's not, you know, the English study session and a few other big things that we've done.
Oh, thank you for that answer. And I do want to say, as a board member of the Willow Glen Neighborhood Association, I don't recall this presentation being done in, ever. So I just wanted to make that a different group.
Um, yeah, there was, we met with a group in Willow Glen. I'm sorry, it was what, three years ago now, and Ed, who, Ed was there. I don't know, but I don't remember which group it was, but we met on Lincoln Avenue with the group of Willow Glen community people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Commissioner Cantrell, Torrance, or Nellis Wise, and then I see Young and Garcia.
Just, you know, I have to say, I love the idea. As a, as a family where we just reduced to one car, and we generally walk to any place that's within two miles. It actually has, it's changed my perspective on my community, and it keeps me closer to my neighborhood and keeps my wallet closer to my neighborhood. So I think there's some other unexpected benefits as well. I did have one question. I'm sure I know the answer, but I would assume there would be no exemption for ADA requirements in this, that handy accessible spaces would still be available. Is that correct?
That's a good question, Martina, or did you have an answer to that one?
Yeah, I mean, I have a, definitely a partial answer, which is where parking is provided under the law, you know, a certain percentage of it has to be accessible. Now, if you're not proposing any parking, I'm not sure if you are required to still add accessible spaces. I mean, I think generally the ADA is around equal access. So I hate to say I don't know the answer to that, but definitely where parking is provided, there would still be those same requirements for accessible spaces.
I, I, I know that what I have seen, I, I, yeah, so we have to get back to you on that. I don't think you, if you're not providing any parking, but we'll have to get back to you on that. But I know where I've seen environments, what, what was typically done is that there was an ADA space put on-street in front of.
And that's appropriate as well, just within proximity. I mean, no, no offense to anyone, but I'm getting older at some point. So it would be great to make sure that that is an assured accommodation as well. But otherwise, great on you. Thanks.
Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this presentation. So the one perspective I want to bring forward is that of a mom of four children, and I know there are other people with larger families or even, just even, even, doesn't matter the size of the family. But when you have an infant and a toddler and maybe an elementary school age, you have children, it can present a real challenge in San Jose, the way it is built, to get around. For instance, where I live right now, there is no grocery store within a half mile. So we couldn't even walk to get groceries or take a bus. There also is no pool in our neighborhood. And so we, if we want to go to a pool, we have to drive, or taking a bus would take quite a long time. And if you have multiple aged children, that can be, that can be a real challenge. Even going to the doctor, that's not close, going to the pediatrician. So for parents trying to raise children, I, I don't want to put more barriers in the way of that. It's a hard enough job as it is, and, and we need children here so that we can have schools and teachers and all of those things, and children really make a city better, I believe. And so my suggestion to the city council would be to go with more of alternative two, where it's a gradual approach to reducing parking and, and reducing the parking in those areas that, you know, whatever alternative two said about in the general plan, in those planned developments, reducing it so that as those are planned, then there can be grocery stores and services that people can get to more easily than if you're living way out in the sprawl of San Jose. So I think a gradual approach is a good approach, and we do need to consider families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Torrance. Commissioner Ordinas Wise.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, for folks that have families and, you know, I don't know, maybe something where, you know, people that carpool, carpool only, or family parking spaces, I think that's a good idea. I did, I know, I mean, I think this is a really bold idea. This is a great idea. I think it's, it's, it's necessary on so many levels. It looks like San Jose already has enough parking for everything, it seems like, you know, so I would encourage more with a lot of these big projects to do parking agreements with other places that already have, you know, tons of parking. So I would encourage maybe recycling the parking that we have by doing these parking agreements, part of, you know, some of these projects to alleviate that. Another thing is, I mean, you know, I, I'm in the, you know, if you know where Monterey Road and Center Road meets, it's like an old shopping center. It has this huge parking lot. You know, if there was a way to give incentive to folks that have, you know, those old shopping centers that have tons of parking spaces to recycle the existing parking spaces and give them some sort of incentive to, to reuse that land in some way. I don't, I don't know how we, we could do that with this ordinance. Neighborhood preservation to me is really important. So looks like there is already ways to preserve neighborhoods while adjusting the parking requirements and just make sure that that's key and critical. Another concern was safety. I mean, there's just been so many homeless encampments and, you know, so in regards to creating a pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly environment where, you know, I as a mom, you know, have also two small children, you know, want to walk or even bike, you know, you know, so safety, lighting, landscaping, I mean, you know, on Capital Expressway and Silver Creek, there was another cyclist, you know, that was hit and died. And, you know, so if you're talking about a holistic approach, I would think that this would be something that on a regional level, we would look at and talk to, you know, Santa Clara County Roads and Airport that manage expressways, VTA, like, you know, different local cities, so that it's something connected and regional to really improve not only transportation, but circulation and safety, I, I think is, is like some of my concerns, but I think it's bold. I think it's necessary. Other people already brought up certain things. I'm also thinking about like events or seasonal events, and how do you mitigate for, for parking in those specific cases? So I, I, I think it's bold. I think it's, it's great, and I think it's necessary that we take these steps. But being a San Jose resident and knowing my community, I, I would think that starting at an alternative maybe would be, you know, like one of the alternatives that you had, like alternative one or two, that kind of slowly progresses to eliminating the minimum requirement. But, but I think it's great, and I think it's necessary, and we definitely do a great job, great presentation. Definitely do a great job, great presentation. Um, yeah, this is necessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Ornelas Wise, thank you. Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to give a chance to, uh, Jess, you, did you want to step in here before I pontificate? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Jess Sank, I'm deputy director for San Jose DOT. Uh, thank you for having us here tonight, uh, planning commissioners. I, I did just want to, to reflect on, um, Commissioner Torrance's comment really briefly. As a, a mom, I'm very impressed that you have four. That's far more than me, but you may hear my two in the, in the background. And I think one of the really important points here that, that is sometimes overshadowed is that there is no elimination of existing parking explicitly proposed here, right? What this proposal would do is would take away those mandates and allow individual developments to decide in consultation with the, the planning staff, the communities around them, et cetera, what type of parking amounts they need. And so I do just think it's really important to keep in mind that we don't expect any, uh, what, we don't expect, you know, grocery stores, we don't expect family serving uses to, to come in without parking. That probably won't make sense to very many from a market perspective. And this would not limit them. They could absolutely, you know, put in the appropriate amount of parking for their needs. Just wanted to make sure that that point was, was clear as we proceeded. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm very strongly in support of this, uh, initiative and thank the staff for all the work they've done. I, I really liked the PowerPoint. Um, it really struck home with me on a personal basis because I consider myself this environmentally conscious person, right? But yet, uh, the grocery store, which for me is like five minutes away. Um, I jump in my car and I drive to the grocery store. Why do I do that? Number one, it's habit. Number two, it's convenient. Even though I have a really nice electric bike sitting in the garage and I like to walk. So I think to me, what that means is it's a cultural change that we're striving for, which is hard. Um, I'm a native Californian and I grew up in Southern California, which is even more car centric than here. Um, and it's hard to change that culture. Um, but it's necessary, you know? It's not as convenient to not be able to drive somewhere and park. Well, guess what? If we're going to make a significant impact on climate change, we have to accept some inconveniences, right? And I think this is one that if we have less parking, we will encourage people to walk or, um, you know, ride a bike or take transit. Um, so I, I think it's important to do this. I, I support the staff recommendation, um, to eliminate parking minimum citywide. I think that's the best way to go and it provides flexibility, doesn't eliminate parking, as Jess said. But it provides flexibility for developers to, you know, design what they think the market will demand as far as how much parking. Um, and just, uh, two other things I wanted to say, you know, overwhelmingly, the response we received was a positive on this, um, recommendation. But we did receive a couple of things that I've, when I was on the Neighborhoods Commission, this really commonly came up. One is, um, the comment that we don't have an adequate transit system. And so we shouldn't eliminate parking minimums until we have an adequate transit system. Well, guess what? We don't have an adequate transit system because we don't have enough people taking transit, myself included, right? And the only way we can get a better transit system is to have more of us riding transit. And then it becomes financially feasible for the VTA to provide more service, right? Whether it's more frequent service or more bus lines or whatever. Um, and the other point is, um, on the, uh, the concern of overflow parking, um, I think the transportation consultant hit it right on the head. We can address that problem. Um, there's permit parking programs, there's other programs, there's technology coming up that will limit uh, who can park in certain neighborhoods and, and try to ensure that residents have that. So, um, I, I think again, this, I, I really strongly support it. This is, this is the right thing to do. Thanks.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, uh, or Chair. Thank you. I agree with the, many of the comments that the fellow commissioners are making. Uh, I do believe that we are, uh, car dependent and as optimistic as we want to be to, you know, eliminate, you know, the greenhouse gases in the environment and things of that nature. We just, we simply don't have the infrastructure. I mean, we could give up our car for one day or one week or one month, maybe. But, um, I don't think I could even do that. So I, I think I, my feedback would be to, to go with alternative two. That, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Lorden Wa.
Yeah, quick question to staff. If this were adopted, how or would it apply to existing entitlements and proposals in the project process, like already in the process?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of that has to be figured out. I mean, maybe you want to step in here, but if people have approved permits that out, that dictate how much parking they're going to provide, then, you know, those, my understanding is that they, those parking requirements be in effect, but they'd have the option to come back and modify them.
Yes, that, yeah, that, that would be correct. And then projects in the process, they could decide, you know, now that they have these new options, they could decide to, you know, just keep going with what they were proposing or, or modify and use the new provisions.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lorden Wa, that, that concludes your comment. Perfect.
Yes, I don't know. I go everything everybody else said.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll weigh in. Um, you know, I'll, 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 I'll try to be brief here. You know, I just concluded a, a six month tour of my community. And the number one issue, uh, that has come up in my interactions, and I know because I live it as well, is this parking overflow issue. The east side, closer to downtown, the Spartan Keys area. We're talking about families that, uh, have absolutely no choice but to actually drive vehicles because a lot of them are working, not even in San Jose, but other parts of the Silicon Valley sustaining the economy. And I think the, the COVID, the pandemic and the shutdown of the, of the world kind of really brought that to light. You know, you guys talked about, you know, how people can work from home. Well, some people work from home. Uh, many in my community did not, including myself. You know, we talked about EVs and, you know, Teslas and Bolts. Well, we'll be honest with you, we're not going to see a parade of Teslas or Bolts uh, in my community. And I can guarantee you that if you met with actual community groups and, and with all due respect to the Luna, you know, they, they, they have a very niche perspective. Uh, if you were to speak to other groups in East San Jose or even in the Spartan Keys neighborhood, you would find a very, very different point of view on this topic. Look, I get it. I get why you want to do this. I care about the environment. This is where my kids are growing up and one day grandkids, if I'm so fortunate. Uh, but the reality is, we also have to ask ourselves a very fundamental question. San Jose is not San Francisco. San Jose is not Manhattan. I mean, we're, if we're going to compare San Jose to a city, it's much more aligned with Los Angeles. And let's talk about Los Angeles. Los Angeles has invested billions of dollars in infrastructure upgrades, new systems, subways. And yet, as of today, you know, six percent of the population in Los Angeles uses public transportation, according to a report just released by USC. So what I'm getting at is, this is, I get why it's so important, but what I think is missing from this conversation is the reality that a large segment of this city, I would almost argue half of it, isn't going to be able to ever make those adjustments. And Commissioner Torrance, you took the words out of my mouth. I mean, I'm over here thinking, I gotta go, you know, my kids are getting a little older, but when they were smaller, if I had to go to the grocery store, if I had to, you know, take them to school, you know, I don't care how big I am, I'm not going to load up all three of my kids on the back of my bike and, and, and drop them off. It's just not going to work. It's just not feasible. And more often than not, you know, cars out here are not a luxury. Cars out here are a, a necessity uh, i- i- in order to allow for families to, to actually support their, uh, themselves, uh, and others. So I think that's what's missing. So I think one thing I would want to add is in this community timeline, uh, you know, if, if the council would be open to having a much more robust, uh, community, uh, session in East San Jose, uh, Spartan Keys. I keep going back to them because for some reason, and, and that, I've spent a lot of time in that neighborhood too, and I talked to a lot of neighborhood leaders there, and there's an issue that comes up. Uh, I, I think you're going to have a very different perspective. I get it. I get, I get the core of why we're here. Believe me, I support it. Uh, and, and I get Commissioner Young, what you're saying, you know, we do have to reduce cars in order to encourage public transportation. But for some of us out here, we're taking our car away. Now, I agree, look, within reason too. I mean, I've run into homes where they've got fifteen cars. That, that's a bit much. Uh, but the vast majority of folks just out here need cars in or, in order to work, in order to go to school, in order to just get things done. So, you know, for the sake of brevity, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, I think you all, uh, had wonderful points. But I do think that the east side perspective, uh, and not just the east side perspective, I would say the, the working class economic perspective uh, is somewhat missing from this because I think we, we say very easily that we can work from home. We say very easily uh, that we can get, you know, perhaps electric vehicles in the future. Um, and we're also assuming, uh, let's be honest, that the community conversation between developers, in, for example, Willow Glen, is going to look very different than the community conversation in East Palo, I'm sorry, East San Jose, um, Center Road, uh, Spartan Keeps, Keys. So with that, I will go ahead and stop my pontificating, uh, stealing your word there, Commissioner Young. Uh, I did see that your hand is up. Uh, so with that, I will defer to you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, because, uh, as I understand the staff recommendation, all three of the alternatives are included. Um, and I think it's been a really good discussion and I appreciate the input from all the commissioners, um, because you really opened my eyes to some issues that are challenges, maybe I would say that I haven't considered. But because all the alternatives are included in the staff recommendation, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendations at this time.
I'll second.
Do we have, do we have a second? All right. With that, we've got a motion on the floor. Like Commissioner Young, second from Commissioner Lorden Wa. With that, I will take a roll call vote. Uh, you know, I'm going to vote no. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Torrance, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't understand, um, the, the motion because if we accept all, because I would like to push forward alternative two. And so if I vote yes with the, the motion, then I'm not, I don't think I'm voting the way that I intend to. So can you clarify what we're actually voting on?
Sure. So all you're doing is you're only accepting our, our, our report to you and presentation. You're not, um, you're not passing a motion on alternative one or the staff recommendation or alternative two. You're just be accepting our report, which is, uh, kind of agnostic. But what we're doing, taking all of the input we're hearing tonight, and we're going to put it in the planning commission and city council memo and relay that to city council so they can consider your feedback and input when they give us direction next.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Sorry, uh, I was about to take the roll call, but apparently I think there are some more questions. So, uh, I'll defer, uh, Commissioner Ornelas Wise.
I just wanted to add to the comments. Obviously, you know, that there's different things that are being brought up. I really think that the, the city council should have uh, a regional transportation task force, really address a lot of these issues, um, and engage a lot of, uh, different folks that are involved. I think that's, uh, and I also think right now that gas prices are very high. This is an opportunity for the city to work maybe with VTA to create some sort of campaign, you know, like ride for free or some incentive for people to use public transportation. I think we're at a point right now that people, you know, who may not have taken a lot of public transportation, would be willing to if there was some sort of incentive. So I, I, I would suggest maybe some sort of campaign to get people out of their cars into public transportation. So that, that's just my last comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to let Jess jump in, uh, because I see, see our hands up. And then colleagues, I know Commissioner Cantrell and Lorden Wa, your hand is up. Unless you feel like it's burning fire to add it, to, to weigh in right now. Uh, I was about to call for the vote, but I'll, I'll let you guys consider that as, as just as getting ready to comment.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, these are very helpful comments and, uh, respect, with respect to Commissioner Ornelas Wise. Just a couple of quick, um, pieces of information. Uh, we do have a Vision Zero Task Force. You raised that earlier. And I think it's a great point and important to raise awareness that we are working hard to make sure that our streets are safe and that people are not killed or seriously injured on them. That is a, a pretty tall order, but one we're working very hard on, uh, through the task force as well at, in regionally, uh, with county roads and airports among others. So I just wanted to acknowledge your point there. And part of the TDM solutions that Wilson, um, listed, just want to highlight that improving our infrastructure and improving the safety of it would count for how you get credit for your TDM contribution because we see that need and that alignment as well. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. And, um, on the question of trying out public transit, uh, the state is considering, uh, three months of free public transit paid for by the state um, in partial response to the gas tax prices, um, alongside the other things they're considering. So if that happens, we'll make sure that the planning commission, uh, does, does hear that so that we can all, because I think you're also right. It is an important time to try that as well as the incentives to deeply discount electric vehicles and get used electric vehicles into more people's hands. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jess. With that, Commissioner Cantrell will be the last, uh, commissioner.
Yeah, just quickly, I, I, just a process question, not that I object in any, any form. I'm just curious why we're voting on something that's not binding in any way that doesn't create, you know, any momentum forward. I'm not sure why the vote, that's all.
And Mark, do you want? Mark, yeah, Mark, did you want to weigh in?
I mean, I can weigh in just sort of generally, I think, I mean, we're talking, I mean, so just strategically where we're at right now is that, um, there's a lot more work to do on this. And we thought it was really important for us as staff to come get feedback from the planning commission and then take that feedback to council and get direction on, do they want us to go straight? Do they want us to go left? Do they want us to go right? I e, staff recommendation, alternative one or alternative two, or some other alternative that we didn't think about. And so that's really what, why would the process were before us today. We think it's ultimately a better process. So we don't spend, I mean, a lot of time developing ordinance to kind of planning commission and the council, and they'd say, ah, 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 you should have gone left. So that's why, why we're doing this. So, um, so we don't really have anything for you formally to vote on. It's more just accepting our, 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 um, accepting our report and, and then getting your individual comments as a commission. We will package them up so the council can hear your perspective as commissioners. And then they can consider that, um, when they give staff to direction and then actually go do the real work of creating the ordinance.
All right. I was, I was going to cut off public comment, but Commissioner Oliverio.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I'll keep it short because I'm on the east coast and it's, uh, twelve thirty seven. Um, so based on what Michael said, uh, I could accept the report knowing that they've encompassed our feedback from the commissioners, every commissioner that has stated something. Um, but I also just want to repeat, uh, there should be a, I'm not trying to slow down the process, but the process of government also involves transparency and community involvement. And when we're doing something bold such as this, yeah, I think we really need to include and do outreach. Uh, I want to make sure that, you know, the general public has an understanding of the implications. If, if the desire is to, you know, just sort of, you know, I don't think there's any ill intent at all. I, not at all. But I just truly think that people should be heard and should be advised. And then the, the elected officials and planning staff and the planning commission, we have to take that in. And, um, I just, I, I want that to be well known to this council staff that we feel, well, at least, and I think some of the other commissioners feel the same way, that, you know, that there should be some significant outreach to bona fide neighborhood organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll go for, for the roll call vote. Uh, and to your point, Commissioner Oliverio, that's actually why I'm going to vote no. I do think it's important to at least have someone on record saying no. I don't think there was any ill intent. I definitely think the city did an amazing job putting this together, but I do think that we're missing something. And that's okay, right? That's part of the, this is the, part of the process. And, and I do think that needs to be reflected. So I am voting no. Uh, with that, uh, Cantrell.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Lorden Wa.
Yes.
Oliverio.
Uh, yes.
Ornelas Wise.
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
And Young.
Yes.
The motion passes.
I'm sorry, can we, can I just, there was two no votes that I think it was Benia and was that?
Garcia.
Thank you. Got it.
All right. With that, we will now go to item six, referrals from city council boards, commissions and other agencies. Do we have any items?
Hang on, I just need to switch gears. Doing the the presentation or of this item. So let me just switch gears for a minute.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm doing that.
I said, I might tell no items.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. No, that's it. That's teamwork makes the dream work. I like that. Perfect. All right. Item seven, good in welfare. Item A, report from city council staff. Do we have any reports from the city council?
So the report is not out, but yesterday, city council actually approved a few city initiated resonance, conformant, conformant resonance. Their party is not out, but yeah, they did do that.
Perfect. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, item B, subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business.
Nothing.
All right, well, now go to item C, election of chair and vice chair for FY 2223. Well, colleagues, it has been an awesome ride to serve as your chairman for this last year. Although I wished I had the opportunity to meet all of you in person and sit on the dais together. Well, the reality of the world didn't make that possible. Having said that, I think this is an amazing body that's done a lot of great work. We went from seven to 11, got to know each other, got to work together on major issues that are forever changing the future of this city. But also having the understanding of this chair and recognizing what's coming on the horizon for 2223. I think experience matters. And for that reason, I'd like to take this opportunity to nominate Commissioner Pierluigi Oliverio as our chair. I think he's our senior member of this commission. He's a former city council member, currently a commissioner and someone who has extensive experience on these issues and that I think can help us as a body, excuse me, help you as a body is, as of the 30th, I am no longer your colleague, I'll be your friend, but no longer your colleague. But I do think that he has the type of experience, the type of understanding of the nuances, the law, that I think will help this body move forward as we continue in our infancy as an 11-member board. So with that, Commissioner Oliverio, I'd like to ask you if you would accept the nomination and perhaps give you a second to to talk about it.
Well, well, thank you, Chair. First of all, I appreciate your efforts during this time. As you mentioned, it was a challenging time with COVID and your zeal for your your community. I I think, you know, having a planning commissioner from every council district is very good at providing representation as we do on the city council. So I appreciate you for your your service and your efforts and based on your suggestion, I I would be willing to be the chair with, you know, with just the intent of making sure that we have a meetings that are process oriented and we go through the agenda and we get through and making sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And then having that vote and moving things forward. So if if if, but you know, this is really up to the commission. If if you feel someone else would be better suited, I'm totally acceptable of that. But yeah, but I appreciate the offer.
Thank you. Commissioner Torrance.
Yeah, I'd like to second that motion to have. Yes, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Bonia, yes. Cantrell?
Yes.
Got to see ya.
I'm in supportive, definitely. Yes.
Lardenois?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Odd to vote no, I guess.
Right, right, right. Ordinalas Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
And Commissioner Young.
Yes.
With that, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Chair-elect. All right.
To to understand that, that would be in July, right? Not the next coming meeting, correct?
I mean, honestly, I'm so exhausted. You can start now. I only slept three hours, so you can start now.
And there should be nomination for vice chair as well.
There will be.
Make a nomination for vice chair.
Mr. Cantrell, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Lardenois. I think he's a stand-up person. Great for the commission, has done a fantastic job of supporting our communities. And I think he'd be a great vice chair.
All right.
He should probably speak first.
Oh, that's right. And do not ask a question about that, Mr. Lardenois.
Yeah, Commissioner Cantrell, thank you. That's very kind of you and I really appreciate that. And yeah, I would be happy to step up and serve as vice chair. I'm really excited for the next phase of this commission of us returning to working together in person again. I have not had that experience as a planning commissioner. I know quite a few people here have not either. And still some of you I haven't even met in person yet. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to work together even better and continue to serve the city and would love to be a part of that as the vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I think that's a, that was a great selection, Mr. Commissioner Cantrell. But gentlemen, team, I'll say this, both of you are now the leadership of the commission and I think this is a great squad and I think all of.
We do have to vote.
Oh, no, I know. I do. I know. But listen, I'm trying to milk the final minutes I got with all of you. But but with that, this is exciting. It's been a privilege to serve with all of you. I think this is a great team as a whole. This is, again, as I've said before, the dream as to why we push for 11-member commission diversity. And one thing you all may not know, in the very beginning, when I was fighting for diversity, it was Commissioner Oliverio that worked with me to help diversify the planning commission. So thank you for your partnership early on in this process, Commissioner Oliverio. With that, we will go ahead and take a vote. Bonia, yes. Cantrell?
Yes.
Got to see ya. Got to see ya. I think he's along in the meeting. Oliverio?
Yes.
Ordinalas Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
The motion passes.
I'm sorry, you put the second on that one, was it?
It it was Torrance with the second.
Thank you.
And I don't know if, I don't think I was called on, but I vote yes.
No, you did, you did, you did vote. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
A little foggy, right?
Tell me about it. All right. With that, congratulations to the team and all of you for making this, in my opinion, the best body within the city of San Jose. All right, with that, we will now go to commission calendar and study sessions. Seeing none. I think item E, item E, the public record. Colleagues, do we have anything for the public record? Commissioner Torrance.
Okay, I don't know if this is public record. I think this is where this fits or maybe. Where do I congratulate my colleagues who ran for office? Because I just think that's so admirable. Is this the spot?
Sure.
Okay, just thank you. First of all, thank you for serving Chair Bonia and also Chair Vice Chair Casey. I know he's not here tonight, but really appreciate your leadership. And then I just admire you, Chair Bonia and Commissioner Lardenois for putting your ring, your hat in the ring and running for office. That's what our democracy needs. And I know it doesn't always turn out the way we expect, but I just really admire you and thank you for for what you've done in, that's, that already has been a service. So thank you.
Thank you. Very, very kind of you. Very, very kind of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Torrance.
All right, colleagues. With that, have a good night and one more time I get to say, until the next one. Take care.
Bye, everybody.
Night, Aaron.
Night, thank you.